Good evening, we'll call to order the May 7th, 2019 City Council Meeting. The Clerk will call the roll and record the attendance.
Anderson Burgos?
Here.
Bartley?
Here.
Resnahan? Leahy?
Present.
Labron Martinez?
Here.
Lisi?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
McGivern?
Here.
Murphy?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Tomlin?
Here.
Bacon?
Here.
Valentine?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
And the City Council. First item on the agenda is public comment. Of which we have seven members signed up in the public. Just as a reminder for those who may have not spoken before, we have a minute and a half of which we kind of let go a little bit here and there, but we will watch over it with that. Come to the mic, state your, um, I'll give your name and your address, but just make sure it's on. First one up is Tim McDonald from Hazen Paper. Please give your address.
Good evening.
Wait, tap it, make sure it's working. There should be a switch on either the top or the bottom.
Hi, I'm Tim McDonald from Hazen Paper. Charlie Sheen is with me, he's also from Hazen. Counselor Murphy has been good enough to put an agenda item on about the condition of South Water Street, which is our only access to our plant and several other businesses on South Water Street. We, it's, it's property we don't own. Mass DOT owns the property. The city uses it as well because the salt shed is located on that piece of property. And the road has deteriorated to the point where it's almost impassable. Truckers are hesitant to come through, worried about tipping their loads. The Fire Department has made note of the fact of the condition of the road. And we're just looking to see what can be done and kind of delineate responsibility. Bob Parent has been working with us on that to some degree. But I know Terry's item will probably be referred to committee and we'll be talking more about it. We've also distributed pictures that illustrate the two main problems down our end of Hoyoke. One is the condition of the road, and the other is the amount of trash, syringes, abandoned homeless encampments that are in the area. It's just a place where people, you know, are, we have employees that walk to work, that bicycle to work, and both issues are making it very difficult for them to get in there right now, so.
And I have Charlie Sheen next.
Sure, Charlie Sheen from Hazen Paper. Just to add, Tim covered the, the main points here. You know, just to, we have been a Hoyoke employer for 95 years. We employ 196 employees, 41 of which are from Hoyoke. And, you know, we, these folks come to work every day in and out of this area, ride their bikes, walk to work, and the, the road is almost impassable. We did do some patchwork over the last couple of days, but, but that's only going to last a short period of time. It is an agenda item later in the evening, and would just please take that into consideration. And thank you.
All right. Next is, it looks like David Taboe of 156 Suffolk Street, if I'm saying that right?
Good evening, it's, it's Tabor, and I'm speaking on the resolution regarding Medicare-for-All this evening. I have a few prepared notes that there's no way I'm going to get through in a minute and a half. So I'd like to, I think what I'd like to say is, I got recently, got interested in Medicare-for-All after reading an article in the Boston Globe about, about our neighbors on the, on the East Coast with, in a, in a city with like extraordinarily high property values. And the, the main question in the article was why with, with all the property taxes they were taking in, they couldn't, they couldn't, they weren't seeing astronomical budget increases to the public schools reflected in, in, in the results they were seeing, graduation rates and test scores. And what struck me about halfway through the article, they had, the BPS administrators were complaining that despite, despite the fact that Boston's doing very well all around, they, those budget increases are going to, to, to the cost of health insurance for the city. And that's, that's what's happening, is we're all trying to, at, at a municipal level, at an individual level, the state level, at the federal level, we're all trying to get ahead. And, and insurance costs are a big part of what's, what's holding us back. And this is, you can just give me a hard out whenever, but this is, this is stuff that people need. As I was saying, saying earlier, we had a little bit of a rally out front, and I was saying that, that people need emergency care, people need open heart surgery, people need chemotherapy, people also need to have, like, like I did at one point, I, I got Romney Care in 2006. For the first time in my adult life, I had health insurance. Excuse me. And I got to see an ophthalmologist who-
Just a heads up, two minutes.
Who let me know, I was, I qualified to be legally blind, I was able to go, with the supports I got, I was able to get my Masters in social work, make essentially the same amount of money I made before, but, but was able to, I feel like, do some important work and support people who need that same access in order to be able to fulfill their goals. All right, thanks very much. Thanks for letting me go over.
Next is Ms. Dodge of One Park Slope.
Mayor Dodge, One Park Slope, so I'm here to urge you to vote for the City Council Resolution Supporting Medicare-for-All that 65 or 67% of Hoyoke voters supported. I've lived in Hoyoke for 20 years, I moved here because it was a diverse, vibrant, and affordable community. I teach at Westfield State, but have previously been without health insurance at various points in my life. Today, despite Obamacare, 9% of the American population doesn't have health insurance, and it's a very scary situation if you've ever been in it. However, I'm here today to talk about the fact that middle-class people are having greater and greater problems paying for health insurance as, as costs have been skyrocketing. Recent national studies show that 40% of those with health insurance have trouble paying for medical costs. I struggle. I often think twice about a doctor's visit that now has a $60 or $90 copay. When I started teaching at Westfield State, copay in 1999, copays were $10, $20, and $30, now they're $30, $60, and $90. The cost of for-profit health insurance is bankrupting individuals, businesses, and municipalities. As an example, I just received this week my statement from the State of Massachusetts, or the Commonwealth, and I pay $150 a month for my share of health insurance, and the Commonwealth pays $600, and that's just for an individual. So it's $750 a month, $9,000 a year just for my single coverage. And I believe that has a lot to do with the fact that we have for-profit health insurance. In addition, I pay over $2,500 out of pocket for deductibles, copays, and uncovered expenses. If I were a newly hired faculty member at Westfield State, this would be over 11% of my take-home pay. Municipalities, businesses, and individuals cannot afford paying these exorbitant costs for ever-decreasing coverage. Moreover, I am continually calling my health insurance company to try to figure out the bills that they're sending me, and my standard line is, "I have a PhD and I cannot figure out this bill." And I use that line all the time. I also have a friend who's disabled, and I try to help him with his medical paperwork, and I use that line with all the insurance companies and the state program he has to deal with. Every developed nation in the world has some form of single payer or national health insurance. Healthcare should not be based on a profit motive and people's ability to pay. Healthcare is a basic human right. Hoyoke voters endorsed the concept of Medicare-for-All in 2018. Please support this resolution, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Lynn Haran of 100 Southampton Road. So, take your time.
Thank you. Above and beyond the call of duty.
That's me, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Lynn Haran. I'm here to support the resolution put forth to support Medicare-for-All, especially considering that 67% of the citizens of Hoyoke in a state election voted to support it. Why does this happen locally? Isn't this a federal deal or a state deal? All good ideas start at the local level. And if we as citizens and we as public officials want to listen to those citizens, then it's a good mark that it's starting so high here. And you all can take the opportunity, as public officials, to not only support us, write letters, and even as citizens, support Medicare-for-All. What does it mean to me? 30-year, 34-years of progressive multiple sclerosis, almost as many of rheumatoid arthritis. I was in my late twenties at the supposed golden time of my life, finished my college education, starting a family and out in the work field. And another five of immunodeficiency disease. Part, a good part of my life is spent doing medical bills, overseeing mistakes made constantly, whether it's medicines, going to physicians, going to therapy. That's because right now, anyway, I'm lucky enough to have medical insurance. When I turn 65, I'll have to get Medicare, and I'm going to be out of luck. And I have had years early in my life where I could not easily make the decision about finding $10 for a doctor and taking my son to the doctor, so I know what it's like not to have it as well. I also have a father who, interestingly enough, was in the medical insurance business. So he gives me a very illuminated version of it, too. Back in the seventies, he actually left the large corporation that he was dealing with because the sorts of things that we're seeing now started back then. In the eighties, he lectured against what we call, in quotes, mass, what I call, I should say, mismanaged medicine, where insurance companies were allowed to dictate how and what the quality of our healthcare was we received. And it's only gotten worse. Medicare-for-All provides a way around that. We have a free market, and we've tried the free market with medical industry. It hasn't really done us too well. And very quickly, I want to read to you something, because for some of you, this might be a hypothetical thing, for a lot of us, it's not. Anybody know what an explanation of benefits form is? Well, if you haven't, we'll talk about paper bureaucracy. It is supposed to explain to the average person, as was discussed by the speaker before, whatever average means, what your coverage you're paying quite a lot of money for covers. This is a medication I have to receive every six months called Ocrevis. I won't read out everything, but the idea is an insurance company is in contract with your medical provider, that being UMass Memorial Hospital for me. This is an infusion drug that I have to go to, to keep me going. The total cost submitted, $254,000, $298.49, one infusion every six months. Plan allowance, which if you don't know what they cover, $52,396.46. What I ended up having to pay, even though I pay very good insurance, and my husband is fortunate enough to have a job that provides insurance for me, I still owe $3,714 every six months. This is only one of many drugs. The reason I bring this up is because if there is that big a discrepancy in what they charge and what is accepted, and I know people that pay very different degrees on what these costs are, yes, definitely, somebody's making profit. I'm going over my time, I don't want to take any more than to tell you that in the industry of this, the profit of it, the final thing really that I can say, is we all profit, every single one of us, every business, when we have good health and when good health is accessible. But no one, absolutely no one, should make a profit off of someone's illness. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sean Kinlan, 231 West Franklin Street.
Hello, thank you. I want to thank the Council first off for considering this resolution. And I want to speak to this as a Hoyoke resident and also as an employee of an organization here in town. You know, as is mentioned in the resolution, the cost of employer-sponsored insurance is a big burden for municipal governments, and the same is true for a lot of private employers, including where I work. From year to year, in order to keep, my employer either has to take on more and more costs or make sacrifices, which generally end up being employee sacrifices, to make sure that the costs stay down. The past two years, in fact, my insurance deductible has gone from $500 a year to $2,000 a year, because as was explained by HR, that's the only way that they can keep the premiums from going up by a significant amount. Also, my, the place that I work is itself a healthcare facility, and as an IT employee there, I'm responsible for supporting a number of functions of our software, including the system that we use to bill different insurance payers for reimbursement for services that we provide to patients. And the, I've seen firsthand the great deal of time and effort that goes into making sure that claims that we file conform to multiple different formats and different requirements that vary greatly depending on which coverage the patient has and which agency or company we are billing. Some of those requirements are sufficiently complex and arcane that even people with years of experience in medical billing still don't always get things right. And then even more resources must be put into the fact that, to the process of correcting and resubmitting those insurance claims. It would be much more efficient, and our organization could be much more confident in its revenue stream if there was a single entity to deal with for reimbursement. For these reasons, I urge you to vote to support the resolution and send that message to the legislature. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sandra, I think it's Monaghan from 248, Manjin from 248 Walnut Street.
Whoops. I'm a recent Medicare enrollee, as of last January, and I'm grateful for the program, but it is a very flawed program. What we need and what we are here advocating for is an improved and expanded Medicare-for-All system. Seniors are struggling with the tremendous cost of healthcare, which currently consumes over 40% of the average Social Security benefit that seniors have to live on. This is partly due to lack of coverage with hearing issues, vision, and dental and long-term care coverage. In order for my own parents to receive long-term care benefits, they had to destitute themselves in order to qualify for Medicaid to pay the nursing home bills. They were not allowed to have more than $2,000 to their name. This is the reality that too many families have to face, as I am now a Medicare recipient, have my own challenges, as I try to balance my limited resources with my healthcare needs. I'm still working part-time. I don't want to retire till I'm 70, because if I wait long enough till I'm 70, I will get another $500 in my monthly Social Security benefits. So I'm trying to hold on till I'm 70. I did have to, for instance, cancel a doctor's appointment this week because I got my Medicare bill, and I can't pay for the Medicare bill plus another doctor copay. I had another doctor prescribe a medication for me for 20-year-long condition of involving an arthritis situation now. It cost from the manufacturer $3,900 a month. With my Part D prescription drug plan, it will demand a copay of $2,600 a month. I am not going to get the drug, obviously. We know from study after study that we can expand Medicare and deliver healthcare to all residents and save money as we go. This is the right thing to do for our seniors and the right thing to do for Hoyoke. Please support this, thank you.
Thank you. And last on the list is Libby Hernandez.
Hi, thank you so much for allowing me to, yes. I'm Libby Hernandez, and thank you and for this honorable opportunity and for you that serve in our City Council. I'm very proud to be part of this, such a progressive community, such as the community of Hoyoke. In the November election, 68% of Hoyoke voters made it clear and made their voices heard at the ballot box by supporting a bill that will convert Massachusetts to a Medicare-for-All system. Voters in Hoyoke are not alone in their support. 78% of voters across six districts in western Massachusetts also favor moving away from our broken health insurance system and establishing a state system that would guarantee healthcare that is free at the point of service. Today, the City Council has the opportunity to join the constituents by sending this message to the rest of the state. Hoyoke is ready for Medicare-for-All. We are ready to work to build a healthcare system that prioritizes people over profits and moves our communities closer to achieving health justice. Every single ward in this city voted in favor of the November ballot question, and we believe that this is a mandate for every city councillor to follow the lead of the residents that they represent. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That is the end of the list for public comment.
Mr. President?
Counselor.
Since there's a, a number of people here interested in this order, can we proceed out of order and take up item 39, which is this resolution regarding Medicare-for-All?
A second. Motion is to suspend the rules and go to 39. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 39. Is an order by Counselor Valentine, Anderson Burgos, and Labron Martinez. Order that the City Council pass a resolution supporting an act establishing Medicare-for-All in Massachusetts endorsed by Mass. House and Senate, approved Medicare-for-All, fired by Senator Eldridge and Representative, I won't even try that name.
Lindsey Sabadosa.
Sabadosa, there, thank you very much, Counselor. The City Council believes access to affordable, quality healthcare is a human right and a fundamental component of a decent and just society, and remains committed to providing a high-quality healthcare to city employees and retirees and making such healthcare available to all residents of Massachusetts.
Motion is to adopt the resolution tonight on the floor.
Second. Motion was to adopt, it was seconded under discussion.
Thank you. So, all of you should have received this, it was sent to the Clerk's office last Friday when the order was filed, and you should have the wording of it. As you heard from many folks that were speaking during public comment, and I want to point out a couple of things that stand out for me in terms of why I think it's important that this body gets behind this type of resolution. Two points that I want to share, and a couple of the speakers actually spoke about it. Number one is that in November 2018, this question actually passed with, in every ward. You saw the percentages as Libby was speaking, with an overall 68% yes of Hoyoke citizens who weighed in on the issue. So we're not talking about 51 or 52%, we're talking about 68. And it was a majority yes vote in every single one of our seven wards, including wards that are usually very conservative. The second piece that I think really stands out for us in terms of our role here with the municipal budget, is that when you look at the wording in the resolution, it says, one of the, the bullets says, "Whereas the City of Hoyoke projects a cost of more than $10,300,000 for employee and retiree health insurance for FY 2018, representing over 8% of the city's $128 million budget." And the projection is that these costs can rise up to 10% annually for the next three years, increasing the tax burden on local taxpayers. We're always here talking about how our decisions impact the voters and the residents of Hoyoke, regardless of which ward they live in or how they contribute to our city. So I wanted to point out those two things. The other piece is that the message that we're sending here tonight, in addition to supporting our residents of the City of Hoyoke, is that this legislation has been filed by Senator Jamie Eldridge and State Representative Lindsey Sabadosa at the Boston level, at the State House level. And so it's us saying as a community, we support what they are doing at the state level, because as we know, all politics are local. And we have an opportunity here to set the precedent for the right reason. Many times, when we look at opportunities to enhance and expand conversations, they are surrounded with negative tones. This is an opportunity for the City of Hoyoke to come forward as a pioneer in this topic. And it is something that obviously impacts every single one of us in many different ways, either through friends, family, our own situations as individuals, as patients. And it most definitely impacts our residents and our constituents. So I urge you all to think about the message that we can send here tonight. I thank everyone who came out to speak. We know it's not easy to get in front of that microphone, so thank you for taking the time on a Tuesday night to join us and share your stories.
So the motion is to, if there's no further, Counselor President?
To Counselor Valentine, if I could, through the chair, or through the President? When you said it was included in the packet, what exactly did you mean, the wording?
The resolution itself was filed with the Clerk's office on Friday.
We don't have a copy of the actual bill that the Senators filed, do we?
I'm talking about the resolution that I filed with my co-sponsors.
I understand that, Counselor, I'm just asking if you have a copy of the bill?
No, it's available online for everyone.
All right, thank you. And I would also, and I, I think this, I don't have a problem with it, of course, I'd like to see the entire bill before we supported it, but my other comment is that when we talk about the public's vote and how they voted on things, we have to keep in mind the vote, the voters of Hoyoke voted on many things, and it's good to use it when it's in favor of you, but the needle exchange program was voted down, but that was implemented. So it's, it's just ironic, and I don't mean to bring up other issues with respect to this order, but again, I would recommend to the body, if someone wants to support a bill that's out, that a Senator is, is supporting, or it'd be nice to have the entire bill, I understand it's just a resolution, but I'd like, I'd like to, I'd like to see the whole bill, but I, I am going to be in support of it, but it's just, we have to be careful when we say that when the public votes one way or votes the other way. Well, sometimes a public vote's a way that many of us not be, may be in support of, but we have to realize that it's, it's a tough card to drop down on a debate when sometimes the public does vote a certain way and it's not, it's not adhered to. But I do support the Medicare bill in this resolution, because again, it's a resolution, and I have no problem supporting resolutions. But, you know, if people are going to, you know, let's just be honest here, if people are going to be using examples of how the public voted a certain way and supported this, well, I can think of some examples that the public voted in support of or lack of support of that we didn't support here in the chambers or in the, in the Mayor's office.
Counselor Bacon.
I'd like to offer an amendment that we send this to DGR, which has been the practice of this body, particularly in the most recent meeting we had.
Motion was to refer to Committee DGNR, it was seconded. Are there discussion? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No.
Show of hands. If you're voting yes, you're voting to send to DGNR, raise your hands. That motion fails, back to the original motion that we adopt the resolution? That was seconded. Counselor Murphy.
Yeah, just, so, so I know we're talking, I know the insurance has been a big issue for the city, but, so if this bill were to pass, what does that do to the city's insurance cost? And, and where does that money come from?
Well, through the chair? Thank you. Unfortunately, I don't have a crystal ball to answer your question specifically about that, but obviously- to answer your question specifically about that. But obviously, if we are talking about the financial piece about all of this, we would obviously be looking at a burden to the city that would be drastically changed. And so, the numbers that I was giving regarding, regarding the projection of what the cost would be, would be severely impacted by this type of decision coming through. I mean, it's, it's clearly an issue of the, the burden of the financial piece which we're looking at right now with that possible inflation through the next three years as well.
But in the, in the bill itself, does it explain how the money's gonna be raised and how the money's being distributed? And I'm assuming if it's, that's the case, we would, the city would be insured through a state program.
So, the, the bill itself, the legislation filed by Senator Eldridge and Representative Sabadosa explains and breaks down how this would be funded. I, I mean, I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm happy to find the bill online and send it to all of you. I mean, like I said, you can Google it. It's very easy to find in the state website in terms of legislation that's out there. But what we're looking at in terms of the numbers I was giving for the city is that obviously if there is an alternative that could cover or assist in the covering of expenses, we're looking at a drastic change in, in what that impact would be to our budget in a positive way. But I'm happy to find the bill when I get home tonight and send it to everyone.
Counsel Anderson Burgos.
No, I'm sorry.
All set? Counsel Bartley.
Yeah, I, I think it's, I'm very impressed by all the speakers, Mr. President. I, I think our, our tradition is, when we do these things on the floor, it's political theater, and it's a resolution, and we all know it has, has, has much weight as a feather. I, I would, I would think though, we would want to get some, some basic facts like costs. I think when, when we talk about expanding Medicare for All, it means expanding the government. That's, that's what, that's what they're talking about because they're talking about, so to say, to say even a hint that's gonna improve the financial picture of, of the taxpaying, of the taxpayers, it's, that's, that's virtually ludicrous because it'll be a massive expansion of, of government into, into healthcare. That being said, Mr. President, I, I think even if we did send it to committee, I, I, I'm not really sure what benefit it would be, though I, I think that's our tradition. You know, we've kind of moved, moved beyond certain traditions here, and, and we just, we just do these, we do these votes. I, for one, have not seen the, the resolution. I, I have no doubt that it was sent. I have not read it. I certainly have not read, I certainly have not read the bill. If I had a, if I had an inkling that we were gonna pass this on the floor tonight, maybe I would have drilled down a little bit more. But given no courtesy to that effect that we have to do this tonight, I, I mean, I'll, I'll vote to support it because, I mean, you heard, you heard the heartfelt stories. They're very sincere, and, and I have no reason to doubt any of them because we know the healthcare, the way it's funded in America is, is probably not in the best interest really of, of the great majority of people, especially the indigent. But I, I would think that we as a prudent body, even as a resolution, as I said, it has no, no weight whatsoever, none. I, I would think that we would at least want to have a conversation, maybe, maybe a half an hour in DGNR committee, just so we can hear the advocates and we can, we can maybe get a better understanding of the costs. You know, we, we took a vote a month ago without even having a ballot question in front of us. You know, the majority here said, "We don't even need the language of the ballot question in front of us on non-binary resolution." So, I know the sense of this room because we don't have it in front of us. I doubt anybody could read it or refer to it tonight. So, I mean, who cares? We're just, we just vote for stuff without seeing it. We'll do it again. We'll do it again tonight. What we did, I mean, if we do with a ballot question, that's amazing. But this body voted for a ballot question without the language in front of us. That is documented fact. And this council said, "That's okay." So, so I assume this council is, has no problem without a resolution or bill in front of us, just to, just to vote it along. Because that's what we do. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counsel Bacon.
I just think we need to be clear when we're voting on this, that if it's an expansion of a government program, it will also be an expansion of taxes because at the end of the day, that is where the government gets the money from that it spends. And I don't know everything about this bill, but I've been listening to the general discussions about what the cost of the expanded sort of nationalized health insurance would be, and they're talking in the trillions of dollars. So, I do think if we're going to be voting on resolutions, we should have the opportunity to read what we're voting on as we historically have done. Thank you.
Anything further?
Just for clarification, so last Friday, the resolution was filed with the clerk's office. I will go ahead and forward that to everyone here tonight. And also, the link to the language of the bill that is in Boston that we're referring to. And again, this resolution is in support of that legislation filed by Senator Eldridge and Representative Sabadosa. We're not reinventing the wheel. We are saying, from a Holyoke perspective, a city of forty thousand people, excuse me, a city of forty thousand people, we are saying thirteen of us as elected officials or whoever chooses to vote tonight in favor of it are saying, "We support this taking place." And just for all your information, just as a, as a point of interest, right before the meeting, there was a rally at the steps of City Hall. It was supposed to be outside, but it was raining, so it was at the steps of City Hall on the side entrance. And State Representative Aaron Vega, who you all know represents Holyoke, was there, and he is fully in support of this. So, part of the resolution talks about sending him a copy. That's just a courtesy. Obviously, he's already on board with it. Not sure where our state senator is on this, but our state rep was here tonight for the rally and is very much in favor as well as our mayor as well. So, just wanted to give that point of clarification.
Counsel Leahy.
Yeah, thank you. I wasn't invited to that rally. I, I would have certainly stopped by. I did see it. I wasn't sure what was going on. I think that anytime we do any resolutions, I think we should, out of courtesy, send along the bill. If it's, if it's a quick email, I mean, that takes three seconds. We could all look up the bill and have the, the option to read it over the weekend. And for this, we did not. I was going to ask, the reason I was asking for it to go to committee, because I wasn't sure where Senator Humison stood on this, and I wasn't sure where State Rep Vega was on this as well. If I was invited to the, the rally, I certainly would have found out where State Rep Vega was on this. I'm going to be supporting this tonight, which, uh, which is a good thing because of a person who, I was in pharmaceutical world for many, many years, and I saw exactly how the high prices of, of Medicare, I'm sorry, medication and hospital visits weighed on people. It was, it was very difficult to see. But on a side note, when, when my wife had breast cancer multiple times, it was on a personal side as well. And, you know, going and buying different medications or finding some sort of cream that's supposed to numb some area, that's a thousand dollars, and, and she'd go without it because it was a thousand dollars copay. You know, different things like that should make you think exactly what, what are we doing here? And the city, the City of Hoyoke does have the option for our employees to go with the GIC insurance, which is the statewide insurance. Springfield did it, and they're saving money now. For some reason or other, the City of Hoyoke keeps not wanting to do that, and I can't figure out for the life of me why. So, I will support this tonight. And all the people that did speak, you guys have great messages, and I'm glad you guys all came down because it's not easy to stand up there at the podium and talk, and talk about personal things. So, I applaud all of you guys for that.
There's, there's nothing further. Motion is that we adopt the resolution. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
President, make a motion to take item sixty-five out of order for two reasons. One, we have a, our city engineer here to speak about it. And two, I will, in a second, if we do take it out of order, explain the emergency nature and time constraints of it.
I'll second it.
All right. So, for the last one, that was approved. For this one, this is a motion to suspend the rules to go to sixty-five. And that was seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? This is an order introduced by Counsel McGivern. Order that they hereby be appropriated forty-four thousand as followed. From tree climber, fourteen thousand seven thirty-five. EVT technician, twenty-nine thousand two sixty-five. So, grand total of forty-four thousand. To professional services, forty-four thousand.
President, make a motion to receive, pass the first reading.
Motion is to receive, adopt, pass the first reading under discussion. Counsel McGivern.
Thank you, everybody, for taking it out of order. Our city engineer is gonna, is here to speak actually on two items, but this is of, I believe, of grave importance. Most of us are familiar with that McKenzie field, the demolishing and removal of what was known as the Field House. This house that was actually starting to cave in. And that demolition has taken place and divisible materials have been removed. Recently, over the last, I'm gonna just say several weeks, it has become known that a underground oil tank, which was not removed during the demolition process, is leaking. That oil has actually, I believe, come to the surface. This transfer here would allow the city to both remove the tank and also, more important, to take the contaminated soil as quickly as possible and dispose of it as, as is necessary. It's a costly venture to dispose of it quickly. The, to me, the emergency is, any, the longer we wait, the more oil that's gonna get into the soil. And regardless of, of what we do, the, the expense is, is going to, to increase. Just a point before our last, that we can hear from the city engineer, is the money is coming from two items. One is the tree climber in the DPW budget. That tree climber for a portion of the year was not filled. This money is surplus money, which, as we, as we all know, as we head towards the end of the year, would just become free cash for next year. The EVT technician is also surplus money for a position that was not filled, and therefore, the request is to come from both those line items. That has been signed off by the auditors. Any transfer before it comes to us is signed off by the mayor. And the request is that we put the money into professional services so the DPW can take care of this emergency as quickly as possible. I would just ask that we also suspend the rules to allow the city engineer to approach and answer any questions.
Motion is suspend the rules to allow the engineer to speak if there are questions. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? With that, the mic is open. We'll turn it over to...
Great, thank you. I believe Counsel McGivern did a good job of summarizing the issue we have right now. It came to light literally on March twenty-eighth of this year and under state regulations. Once we became aware of an oil release, we had to report it to the state within two hours of becoming aware of the release. We did that. That resulted in the state issuing a letter to the city that requires the, a plan to be put together within sixty days of that notification, which is of May twenty-seventh, and ultimately the cleanup to be completed and to be reported back to the state no later than July twenty-sixth of this year. If we fail to do this, we then owe an additional, we owe a fee to the state of fourteen hundred dollars, fourteen hundred and seventy dollars. If we clean it up in advance of that, we only owe the, the cost of cleaning it up. And the longer that we delay in cleaning it up, the more fees that we'll have to pay to the state.
Counsel Bartley.
Thank you, Counsel McGivern, for a great summary. And Bob, I did get a call on this from Mr. McManus on Friday. For some reason, Mr. President, he seemed to indicate that, yeah, you Bartleyer don't like surprises. And so, I'm glad, I'm glad he...
I don't know where you heard that from.
You know, I like surprises, but maybe not with, you know, dropping fifty thousand dollars. But, Bob, if, if I may, you said you discovered it March twenty-eighth?
That's correct.
Okay. And when was the building demoed?
I'm, within the last couple of years. I wasn't working for the city at that time, so I, I don't know of the date of the demo.
Right. So, when we demo things, don't we take, don't we take some baby steps? Do we use ground penetrating radar? Do we, I mean, these inventions are not like, you know, new. I mean, so, I mean, what happened? Why, why did, why did it take to March twenty-eighth to discover it?
Again, not being with the city at that time, I can't speak to what was or wasn't done at that time.
Respectfully, that's just a basic question that, that I, I would, you know, I mean, clearly we have to support this. But, and again, this is not on you, but we get it. But stuff like that just shouldn't hap, so we're taking down a building, and we don't take, I mean, I don't know anything about construction, but I do know a little bit about, I mean, we got the demo expert over there. I, I do know a little bit about, you know, common sense. And so, I'm hopeful that when we're, I assume when we dig in the ground, we have a dig-safe policy. I mean, I think everybody basically knows that. When you're planting a tree, you have to call dig-safe. So, when we're demoing a building, I, I would have thought that there would have been some kind of a checklist to at least see what's underground or to, to go through registry of deeds or, or whatever it is. So, I'm befuddled as to why, why this is, because that building came down, I, I want to say, two years ago. And, and it was our own city employees that took it down. They, they did a really nice job, and, and they did it to behest of, I think, the, the ball team that's, that's there right now. So, we, you know, we want to make a presentable field, especially since we passed yet another bond to put in a lot of improvements into McKenzie Stadium, which I think are, are gonna, again, pay off handsomely. But again, we, we bonded for that. I mean, what, what are we gonna do in the future? Let me, let me change the equation. What are we gonna do in the future when we, when we demo buildings, especially public buildings? When we're, I mean, when we issue permits, don't we, isn't that part of the deal? When we issue permits, the building commissioner, does, does he not say that we have to get an understanding what's, what's not just above the ground, but what's in the ground? I mean...
In response to that, I would agree that the suggestions you've made do make sense, and there, there are things that we should be doing in the future.
Okay. Can we, can we get, well, thank you for that.
Nobody agrees with Dave.
Can we, can, can we, at least get something in writing about, about, about the future when these, when these occurrence, I mean, clearly, we're gonna be taking other buildings down, especially public buildings. We, we've just gotta get a better, a better game plan going forward for that. So, Bob, thanks for coming here. Counsel McGivern, thank you.
Counsel Sullivan?
If I can answer a few of those questions through the, through the chair, through the President. The, this type of demolition, it was a slab demolition, a slab. There was no basement. There was no digging necessary. So, there would be no need to call dig-safe on something like that. Also, so other, other buildings in the city, most of them would require some excavation. Anything requiring excavation would require something from dig-safe. The, the other point on that, and this is true of so many facilities in an aging infrastructure like this, a lot of time, accurate records aren't kept. I believe that one was converted to gas heat at some point, or possibly electric. But there was no sign of an oil burner as such in there. So, it would leave, it was a deteriorating building. It was crumbling. It was not only for the baseball team, but it was unsafe for the public. The kids play in there as well. So, it was a very rushed affair. And throughout the, not just throughout Hoyoke, but to find underground tanks that just weren't documented back in those days, it's a very, very, very common problem.
Counsel Leacy.
Thanks. I guess my, my question is, do we know that the removal or demolition of the building is the cause of the oil release? Do, do we know that as a fact? Or, I mean, there could be a number of environmental factors at play. I mean, is there anything that suggests that the demo of the building was the, the cause of the oil release?
Again, not having been there, I'll, I'll tell you what my opinion is, that the demo probably is unrelated to the fuel release. It was probably related to the condition of the tank and the tank degrading over time. And removing the building probably had very little effect on it at that time.
Yeah, thank you. And then additionally, is there any indication of how long the release was occurring before we discovered it?
There isn't. As soon as we became aware of it, we, we advised Mass. DEP, and it, we certainly had been in that area in the fall, and no one had detected any smell of diesel fuel or any sheen on the surface. And as soon as we did that, again, on March twenty-eighth of this year, that's when we put the, put the notification out.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone further? Motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion would be to pass the second reading. The clerk will call the roll. I pulled the name. Counsel Bartley will go first. And this is, if you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer from the two line items into one.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentin?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Put your vote. You approve the transfer.
Mr. President, while the city engineer is here, if I can make a motion to suspend
Your vote, you approve the transfer.
Mr. President, while the city engineer is here, if I can make a motion to suspend rules and take up item 63, and I'll explain the question.
Motion is to suspend the rules, take up item 63. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Order from Council McGivern. That the council order for tennis court reconstruction, some approval on August 2000, August 4, 2017, be modified to include repairs, two, and resurfacing of the James Jackson Court located at South Canal Street.
Mr. President, I ask that we receive and adopt it.
Motion is to receive, adopt, pass the first reading under discussion.
Just very quickly, I believe this is what we know as the Bartley Amendment at work. The importance of when something happens, when we bond, or something happens, when we appropriate funds. And there's a change in the scope of the way those funds are to be spent, that we need to see that. And it should come back for a second vote. This original vote was back in August of 2017 by the city council. I'm gonna leave it at that. The reason that I'm asking for it to, is at the request of our Ward II Counselor, Counselor Murphy, to take up this evening is because there are some time constraints in terms of some court uses and, I think, tournaments that are coming up. The city engineer is here to represent the DPW and answer any questions.
Yeah, just for everyone's information, last meeting, Council Murphy filed an order, of which we did explain in a sense of we'd have to go back to this bond, reamend it in order to allow for doing this park for $45,000. There was discussion that there might be funds available somewhere else, but timeframe-wise, we couldn't do it. We approved that request to then go to the mayor to see if he would do that. And that's what he is doing here. He's sending the language to amend the bond to allow us to do the $45,000. So that was at the last meeting. Now it's coming full circle. Counselor Murphy, did you have something to add?
I'll go, Counsel. No, I'll talk after.
Counsel Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to say that I will be supporting this tonight with the understanding that, if at all possible, down the road, there will be some monies repurposed out of CDBG so that hopefully, we would not have to utilize this money. But in the interest of time and not knowing when it would be perhaps available, I will support it. Thank you.
Counsel Murphy?
Yeah, first of all, I want to thank you all for giving consideration. I want to thank the mayor for putting this before us through Council McGivern. And I also want to thank the city engineer, the DPW, Parks and Rec, and also Ed Kades from the Safe Neighborhood Initiative, who's been a strong advocate. When I first got chosen and appointed in January, this was one of the first orders I put in. And Ed Kades has been working with me to try to bring more things into South Hoyok. The court was dedicated in 2002. It's 17 years old. There is no way we could hold a tournament that would attract people and feel comfortable playing on that court. And I was just there over the weekend for the cleanup. So I really hope that you can agree to support this. I will be trying to work with Alicia and Community Development if that, if any of that gets reprogrammed to be able to do some of that. But the time constraint, as the city engineer has indicated to me, if we could do it tonight, he feels we would be in a great position at the end of June, early in July, to have two new courts that would be able to host a quality basketball tournament. And I'm trying to get quality basketball tournaments for both boys and girls.
Anyone else? So the motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is to pass the second reading. The clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the amendment to the bond.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve the change.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion to take 24A out of order?
24?
Well, 24A and 24B out of order.
Second.
Motion is to go out of order, suspend the rules for 24A and B. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 24A. It's from ordinance. Committee on Ordinance referred to special permit application for 56 Canal Street, 7 Bridge Street. Having considered that the application be approved with the following conditions, that the owner of the building always pay commercial and property taxes, a tax rate to the extent allowed by federal, state, and local law for the duration of the special permit, that the business retain a minimum of 30% of Hoyok residents for a non-security job, that hiring preference be given to security personnel, that our retired police officers or retired members in other police department now living in the city of Hoyok, that there shall be no marijuana consumption on site, that there shall be no deliveries or retail medical marijuana from, it looks like typo, from the site to the individual home or residence of people, that hours of operation be in compliance with the city ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to approve this special permit. And I want to thank Council Bartley for chairing an added meeting so that we could keep this moving in the interest of the applicant.
Second. I, hold on, I was just looking at something. I'm sorry, Counsel. So that was 24A. We are also taking up 24B. You want them as a package, correct?
Well, no.
No, they're separate.
Okay, okay, so, okay.
As a package.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. So back to 24A, what was your motion? I apologize.
So the motion is to approve the special permit with the listed conditions. And I just wanted to note, because they aren't listed separately, that the current city ordinance is 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., seven days a week, for hours.
So you're changing?
No.
Six or just leaving it?
I'm not, I'm just clarifying what it means. I'm not changing it.
Okay. So 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. is the current city ordinance.
Other than that, unless Counsel Bartley wishes to go into greater detail, the applicant was very thorough. It was complete. There were a few remaining questions because of some paperwork timing relative to letters to ensure that the different departments had had an opportunity to reply, which is what continued to the 30th. And otherwise, it was pretty straightforward unless Counsel Bartley has something he wishes to add.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't really have much to add, other than, Mr. President, these are very serious investors. It's a very significant sum of funds that they're investing in purchasing the property. And I'm sure just as significant in investing in the property, I think we ought to be grateful to them. I know that the, this isn't everything that they wanted. I appreciate their, everybody's patience going through the process, but the process is a process. And we shouldn't, you know, divert from it just for one entity, whether they're a big player or a small player. So, but I think, I think going through the process was very beneficial. So I, and I think that if we had circumvented it, we would've been pretty well in the dark, especially in regards to the hours of operation. And therein was the issue at the first public hearing. But we found out that, that what was thought to be a possibility was not a possibility. In other words, a 24/7 deal, that's not a possibility. That's not the way the ordinance reads. So we, fortunately, we slowed it down. And then we had another hearing and we got it right, Mr. President. But I think the bottom line is that this is a very important organization that's gonna have a tremendous, I think, when it's said and done, after a couple, three years. I mean, you're talking probably, Mr. President, 200 to 300 jobs. I don't, I don't use those numbers lightly because that's what the proponent was saying. I think, interestingly enough, that they might even be able to help bring back the bus service that was there for PBTA for years. And that was taken away in the budget cuts last year, the Tiger Trolley. And furthermore, there might even be some synergy with this organization and Mount Holyoke College. So, you know, there's just a lot of pluses from this. And we're, I said it on the microphone a couple times to them, and I'll say it again, we're grateful for their presence here and for their investment in the city of Hoyok. I'm only gonna say the same one last time, because I already said it twice at other meetings. I will say again, it was this body that made the determination to have this industry in this zoning. And why did we do that? We did that because nobody else, Mr. President, was knocking on the door to invest in these old mill buildings. Nobody was. So when this body made the tough call, not unanimous, never, rarely is here, but we made the tough call and we did it for a reason. We didn't do it to penalize a ward. We didn't, we didn't do it to hurt anybody. We did it to promote investment in what we felt were the two wards that needed it the most. And I think now, with this building and the types of millions of dollars that are being invested here, I think we are proven that the decision we made was the right one, Mr. President. I think this body should be applauded for doing what we did at that time on this ordinance. And so, I mean, that's the kind of substantive stuff that we've, that we've done here and we've been proven right. And I'm very proud of that, Mr. President. Thank you.
Counsel Lisi?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I'm really excited to have a large-scale cultivation facility coming into town. As Counsel Bartley mentioned, they are investing a significant amount of money in the purchase of the building. And then also to furnish the inside of the building with all the equipment that they need is going to be a serious investment. These are veterans in the industry. They have a facility up and running in Florida. And so I think that things will move along quickly for them. They've already been working with Hoyok Community College to help them develop a curriculum of sorts for people that want to move into the grow industry. Because I think what we have heard through multiple applicants coming in for cannabis cultivation is that really, these skills are gonna be transferable to other grow operations where people are really interested in growing food. It's gonna be like the new, quote-unquote, agricultural revolution. Yeah, so it's a, really nice to see that an economic development strategy that we laid out many years ago is coming to fruition. And they're going to be, if they can get the 24-hour operation, which I have filed an order in this agenda later, later on, you'll see, it'll come up, they would be able to employ up to 300 people. And they do have the condition to seek local hires first. So that would be a really great opportunity for many Hoyok residents. They are paying living wage and fully benefited jobs, as far as we heard through the special permit process. So I support them. I'm excited to have them come to Hoyok. And I think it's gonna be a great opportunity for the city in terms of tax revenue, economic development, and then our residents in terms of employment and benefited opportunities.
Anyone further? I do have a question for legal, so I'd like to ask the suspended rules to ask a question to legal.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Just reading the conditions, it says item six, that the hours of operation be in compliance with the city ordinance. Knowing that there is a, an item going to ordinance, if that were to be changed to 24/7, would they have to come back and amend their special permit? Or I think the language is sufficient enough that if we did change the ordinance, they would then be in compliance with six? I guess my question is, would they have to come back to amend their special permit or would they be sufficient based on that language if we did change our ordinance?
So since our condition isn't specific, they would just need to stay in compliance with city ordinance. So as it changes, they would just need to continue to comply. So I actually think that's worded really well.
Okay. So with that, if there's no further discussion, motion is to pass the first reading?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is to pass it be ordained. Their second?
Second.
We don't have to actually...
Enrolled?
We don't have to...
I didn't do enrolled.
This is a special permit.
It's a special permit, isn't it? But don't we still do a roll call?
Yeah, but we don't have to...
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, I thought it was, okay. I knew we had to do a roll call. I thought we had to do an order. So clerk will call the roll.
Will the passage be approved?
If you vote yes, you're voting for 24A.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve 24A. 24B was also suspend the rules. That the committee on ordinance refer to special permit application for establishment of a campus testing lab at 28C Appleton Street, Suite 3. Recommended that be approved as amended, that the owner of the building always pay commercial property taxes to the extent allowed by federal, state, local law for the duration of the special permit. Two, that the business retain a minimum of 30% of Hoyok residents for non-security jobs, that hiring preference be given to security personnel to, that are retired police, Hoyok police, or that they are retired members in other police department that now live in the city of Hoyok, that there be no public access to the building, that all waste removal be done by a licensed contractor.
Mr. President, I'd like to offer an additional amendment to the conditions, which would be number six, which would be the hours of operation, that would be Monday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
Second. To Monday to Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., all days?
Correct.
Okay. So motion would be to add number six, that the hours of operation be Monday to Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., all days.
Including Saturday?
Include, yeah, Monday, Saturday.
Could I make a second amendment?
It was seconded, I heard.
No, I want to make another amendment.
Oh, well, first, on, well, the, first vote on that amendment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Any discussion?
Yeah, we're going, discussion, Counsel McGivern? On the amendment too.
What is the purpose of different hours? That's...
Counsel Bacon?
This was discussed in the public hearing, and it was the request of the applicant, and it just simply didn't get on the list for the agenda.
And I respect that, because I couldn't attend the hearing. I did watch some of it on TV. But my own, and it's not, I'm not questioning if that's what the applicant wants, we're fine. It's just I've learned with special permits, we've been sued before, where if our special permit time constraints are not consistent with one entity, you know, who has a permit versus a separate entity who's doing the same, same type business, we violate a, I believe it's a federal law or a federal free enterprise standard. I just questioned, I just, that's why I questioned it.
Counsel...
That's my understanding.
Counsel Bartley?
Yeah, so, I appreciate that, because, you know, that's the last thing we need is having a law. So, but, but in this case, we have their legal counsel saying, Dave, last meeting, we said eight to six, Monday through Saturday. Thank you. said that in public hearing and filed, I, we just, we just simply didn't put in the, um, you know, we just, it was a busy meeting, Mr. President, so that's why we're, we're amending it now.
Counselor Leacy.
Um, the way that this, uh, business entity was described to us, it's, uh, really a small operation, um, and there's, uh, basically a small bit of lab equipment that's being used here and, um, I, I think our ordinances are allowing only for two additional hours compared to what the applicant requested and, um, I don't see, I don't see it to be a big deal to just, um, stay silent on the hours of operation and we understand, according to the public hearing, that they're going to be operating between these more limited hours, but I don't think we need to use the special permit to, um, set a hard external limit on when they can operate their business. Um, so I, I'm, I'm happy without the amendment.
Counselor Murphy?
You want to vote on that amendment or?
Well, no, we're.
Under discussion.
Yeah, just, uh, item two, as I understood, the company, there are two employees and neither one of them are Hoyoke residents, so item two, if we keep that as a, a condition of their special permit, they can't open, uh, because their two employees are not Hoyoke residents, so, uh, so I think we need to remove item two at this point, uh, or create some other way of saying any new employees are going to give preference to Hoyoke residents, but as I understood it, the, certainly the primary person that's driving is from Amherst, and I thought he said the other person was also from Amherst.
If, if I may.
Counselor Bacon.
So these conditions that we put on anticipate that in the future, there may be more employees, they may expand, they may do something differently than they're doing at the time of application. And it was disclosed and understood in the public hearing that they will be opening with the two owners, um, that are from outside of the city. Um, so this would not prohibit them from opening. Um, and I think as we've discussed, while we put these as conditions, they are somewhat aspirational in nature.
Counselor Murphy?
Yeah, I, I certainly respect Counselor Bacon's opinion, but I just, again, I'm just reading it and if I'm knowing this is one of the conditions of the special permit, uh.
Clearly, they will not live up to the condition of the special permit. I mean, if we say that we want you to have 30%, make the goal of hiring 30% Hoyoke residents, but to say that the business retain a minimum of 30% Hoyoke residents for non-security jobs, I mean, again, I, it's only two people, but again, that special permit in that case would be invalid.
Counselor Bacon.
I do take Counselor Murphy's point. I would just note that with all the other permits that we have approved and have gone forward, they either have no employees or we actually sitting here don't know what the percentage is relative to the special permit for the one that is up and operating. Um, so, as a functional matter, um, if we change it for this one, then we are undoing all the standard conditions that we have been placing on all the special permits that we have approved. Um, this is a, a different animal because it's simply doing lab, so it is, um, unique in that regard. Um, I'm, I mean, I'll defer to Legal if it's the will of the body. I'm just concerned if we start undoing the standard conditions that then we'll be opening ourselves up in another way.
Counselor Bartley.
I just want to follow up on that. That's pretty much what Legal has told us, consistency in the permitting process is what it's about. So that's what we're doing. We're being consistent in the permitting process. Um, just as to hours of operation, Mr. President, why in the world do we want to go beyond what the applicant specifically requested in writing? Why would we do that? It's in writing. They stated orally in a public hearing. They want it Monday through Saturday, eight to six. Why go through, why, why do we do that, Mr. President? It, it's just, it's, it's, it's mind-boggling. I mean, I mean, this is what the applicant requested. It fits within our ordinances. They agreed to this in a special permit. I have a follow-up email from Legal Counsel to the applicant, Monday through Saturday, eight to six. I, I don't see where the debate rests. That is pretty well clear-cut. Thank you.
Counselor Leacy.
Yeah, I mean, I think the ordinance allows for the business to operate within the hours that they requested and so to actually set limits is actually going to take extra action and extra steps, um, that are not required. So staying mute allows the business to conduct, uh, within the hours that they're anticipating and if the, if it grows and, you know, the ordinance says that they can grow to 8:00 p.m., then so be it. It's no, no harm done if we stay silent on it. It's more work and more debate and more controversy, uh, to actually set some sort of limit when the limit is there and they're working within the limits.
Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just note that during the public hearing and the public meeting, which was voted out by the committee to the council, this was voted in that context. This is simply fixing a technical matter. We, I'm not offering this as something new. I'm offering it to document what was already voted in the process.
So in committee, you had six items of which there's a typo, it's missing.
Correct.
In pursuant to the rules, you have to amend it to put it in because it's not there. Anyone else? All right, so the motion is to put in item six that was left out, which is that the operations be Monday to Saturday, s- 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., every day, Monday to Saturday. Everyone understand? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries, item six is added. Now it's, motion is to.
The motion is to approve the special permit as amended?
Motion is approve, special permit as amended. The clerk will call the roll. We vote yes, you're voting for the special permit, which is item 24B, as amended.
Bartley?
Yes.
Resnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lebron Martinez?
Yes.
Leacy?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tolman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Anderson Bergos?
Yes.
Unanimous.
With your vote, you approve 24B.
Mr. President?
Yes, Counsel.
Can I ask for one more courtesy? Suspend the rules to take item 68 out of order, but this would be for the purpose of referring it to Committee on Finance.
Second.
Motion is suspend rules, take up item 68. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Sixty-eight is from, not sixty-nine. Introduced by Counsel McGivern, order that the city council, uh, that the council order for boiler and window replacement at Kelly Elementary School and window replacement at Sullivan and Morgan Elementary School, approved April 18, 2018, be modified to include removal, purchase, and installation of a new AC unit in public school facility within the Hoyoke City, originally, uh, thirteen million seven hundred ninety, uh, seven thousand five hundred eighty-one dollars appropriation. So this is to finance?
Yes, Mr. President. The, um, the courtesy is Mr. Anderson, as, as we know, is sitting behind me, uh, as the, the manager of facilities, maintenance, and buildings within the school department itself. Uh, we, we all know his, his work integrity is second to none. He likes to come down on these evenings, even though he knows it's going to Committee on Finance, to see if there's any questions that he can answer in advance and be prepared for the Committee on Finance, uh, meeting itself. Again, this looks like another, uh, result of a good Bartley amendment and some additional things that can be done within a work order that we passed, uh, I believe it was last year in April.
All right, so to finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Anything else?
Mr. President? Counsel. I think, uh, can we take, uh, item number two, three, four, five, six?
Okay.
Uh, together as a package?
Motion is to suspend rules, take up two, three, four, five, and six as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Two is the reappointment of Carl Eager to hedict. Uh, three is Michael Murphy to hedict. Four is Counselor McGivern to hedict.
Oh, maybe we should take that one separately.
Those are all reappointments. The fifth one is also reappointment, um, for the Conservation Commission for, uh, Ms. Arnold. And six is, uh, Mr. Knox to the Board of Appeals. So these are all reappointments.
Yeah, re, uh, reconfirm all of them?
Motion is reconfirm all reappointments. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seven.
No.
Which one?
One.
Item one.
We never did one.
Oh, we skipped one?
We never did one.
All right, so one.
One is the loneliest number.
We'll go right back to the top. Uh, from the mayor, a letter regarding a proposal for 689 Main Street and 144 High Street. Motion to send to.
Uh, Senator.
DGNR.
Receive and.
DGR.
DGNR.
DGR.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. President?
Counselor Bartley? Do we, do we have a, I, I, we, we got a late file today about.
A and B.
About three o'clock.
A and B.
Uh, I, I just, I just want to, I want to just make a motion, take them up and then leave them on the table so they can be placed on a public agenda, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion is to go to late files, A and B, suspend rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? A is, just says lone order that the city appropriate the amount of one hundred and thirty-one thousand four forty-six eight oh four for the purpose of paying costs for design.
Million.
It's a million.
Uh, that's what I meant, same million.
It's one thirty, it's one thirty-one thousand. Let's do it.
Two dollars. It was two dollars. I'm not, uh, this is for the bond now that I, as I'm looking for, for the schools. And then another one is B, uh, to approve the calling of debt exclusion. This is the ballot question, a resolution or order, um, pursuant to General Law 59, section 21C, which looks like the language for the ballot question. But there's, it doesn't say where it's from. It's just.
It's just the language from the legal department, so, I mean, I think we should suspend the rules and send them over to Charter and Rules so that they can talk about them in committee whenever it comes up next. That would be the reasonable thing to do.
If I, if I can answer, um, B, I could receive a call from, uh, the, uh, the Law Department.
Okay, so Counsel McGivern?
B is, my original order and request to the mayor for the, the ballot question for the potential, if, if we're going to do it, de-debt exclusion, which we know is, is far from, uh, the debate is far from over. Um, the language was incorrect and this is the replacement language that Charter and Rules has been waiting for so that not only the discussion they're having, but that they can have the actual language. Um, it's the, the correct format, even though the committee requested it, is that it should come through the full city council and get, get the committee where the debate has already been ongoing.
So motion to suspend the, the rules to take final action.
Motion is to suspend the rules.
There was a motion before that.
First, okay, okay. Uh, first, the motion was to table, but really we first, first we took it up and I, all I did is read what they are and try and clarify what they are. So A, it just says lone order once again for a hundred and thirty-one million, not a hundred and thirty-one dollars. Uh, B is the language for the bond, but for the debt exclusion or the ballot question, which really, that is what we did ask for in Charter and Rules. I'm not sure why it's coming this way, but so far, we've taken it up, that's what they are. First motion is to table. It was seconded.
But I then amended that, right?
It's non-debatable.
How do you amend the table? How do you do that?
Stop, stop. So the motion was to table it. It is non-debatable. There was another motion to receive and adopt and send to committee.
Second.
And that was seconded. So on the second amendment, which is to receive, adopt, and refer to committee.
Point of order, Mr. President?
We can't adopt.
Point of order.
Not adopt, I, I'm sorry. We're trying to get through all the language here.
Point of order?
Yep.
How is it that we have a non-debatable motion before us and yet we can take an amendment on that?
We're not debating it. There was amendment to the amendment. That's not debating.
That is.
It's amending.
That, that, that is, why, how, that's a definition of debating. That, that, that's, that's, that's injecting an opinion in, into a non-debatable motion. I don't see how you can amend a, a motion to table, Mr. President. So I, I'd like a ruling.
I'll give you one. Hold that. I don't think you can. Code is right.
Amendment, motion to table.
Well, that's what we're looking for in order to give clarity. That being Roberts rules. Anyone have their book?
I'm looking at it online and it's not very clear about how it would be amended. It talks about the preceding amendment, but not about following amendments.
I got my Roberts rules.
I found this on the web. Amen. So.
Up.
Under, um.
So Roberts rules 52, uh, suspension of the rules, motion to table. The motion is non-debatable and cannot be amended, nor can it, can any subsidiary motion be applied to it, nor a vote on it be reconsidered, nor motion to suspend the rules of the same purpose be renewed at the same meeting. So that would mean that the motion was to table, it was non-debatable, therefore not amenable.
Point of inquiry?
Yep.
These are both late files. Um, the president read the late files. Don't we have to make a motion to take them?
Well, that's what I was looking at.
Receive them and can't we discuss this under receiving them first, before the motion to table?
Well, the issue is with late files, and that's what I was kind of looking at first, Counselor McGivern, is we adopted new rules on the late files. So order, rule 44.
There's a table of motions that cannot be amended.
An order presented to the city council other than provided for, if in an opinion of the maker of the order requesting a resolution, the matter requires an urgent, immediate attention, which we haven't had that yet. In the case of such a late file request resolution, other form of business herein order, the maker shall indicate the order be considered a late file upon reading of the order, present a brief explanation, which was what we did, uh, to consider the order on the night rather than waiting for a regular genymitym. Order filed after the deadline presented in rule 44, uh, paragraph one and not specifically designated as a late file for consideration, uh, be will instead added to the agenda of the next regular council meeting. So we introduced it. Um, the procedure has been to refer it to the next item unless we make a motion to take it up and act on it tonight, which then a motion came out to table it, which you can either send it to the next agenda item or the motion, as we said, was to table it. That is the explanation.
Yeah, but according to, uh, rule 28 to lay on the table, uh, that's non-debatable.
Right, I, we're not debating. I'm giving the explanation of the rules and the order that came in as a late file. So the ruling is that since it was requested to be tabled, we're not debating it, we're debating the rule associated with it, it cannot be amended. So can no longer run a discussion, that is what's before us. The motion is to table.
We take one at a time?
What was taken up as a package? Suspend rules take up as a package. Are we now suspended rules to ask be separated?
Please.
So, I don't think you can do that because it's, since it was a package and it was asked to be tabled, that would be actually debating it, so therefore we'll stick with motion is to table. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The now have it.
Mr. President?
Question is a show of hands, that's one. Two, so we have to.
I just have a point of order.
Yep, point of order.
So you just read us the rules, which would say it has to go on the next public agenda of the city council per our rules.
Unless there is a motion, unless there is a motion.
Right, right, but I'm just saying, so the current motion before us is simply.
There's a table of motions that cannot be amended.
An order presented to the city council other than provided for, if in an opinion of the maker of the order requesting a resolution, the matter requires an urgent, immediate attention, which we haven't had that yet. In the case of such a late-file request resolution, other form of business herein order, the maker shall indicate the order be considered a late file. Upon reading of the order, present a brief explanation, which was what we did, to consider the order on the night rather than waiting for a regular genym item. Order filed after the deadline presented in Rule 44, paragraph one, and not specifically designated as a late file for consideration, be will instead added to the agenda of the next regular council meeting. So, we introduced it. The procedure has been to refer it to the next item unless we make a motion to take it up and act on it tonight, which then a motion came out to table it, which you can either send it to the next agenda item, or the motion, as we said, was to table it. That is the explanation.
Yeah, but according to Rule 28, to lay on the table, that's non-debatable.
Right, we're not debating. I'm giving the explanation of the rules and the order that came in as a late file. So, the ruling is that, since it was requested to be tabled, we're not debating it, we're debating the rule associated with it, it cannot be amended. So, can no longer run a discussion. That is what's before us. The motion is to table it.
We take one at a time.
What was taken up as a package? Suspended rules taken up as a package? Are we now suspended rules to ask be separated?
Please.
So, I don't think you can do that, because it's, since it was a package and it was asked to be tabled, that would be actually debating it. So, therefore, we'll stick with, motion is to table. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Then let us have it.
Mr. President?
Question is a show of hands. That's one, two.
I just have a point of order.
Yep, point of order.
So, you just read us the rules, which would say it has to go on the next public agenda of the city council, per our rules.
Unless there is a motion, unless there is a motion.
Right, right, but I'm just saying, so the current motion before us is simply saying that we're gonna do what we passed our rules to do.
Well...
I'm just confirming that.
Well, no, what happened is, there was a motion to table it. So, you can suspend the rules to take up late files if there's an emergency and act on them that night. If you don't, you can always request that it, in essence, be forced to the next agenda. That was what a rule change was. That's 44, Rule 44. This was to table A and B as a package, therefore...
And put them on the next agenda.
Well, to table it, which then is on the next agenda, it's tabled. Therefore, there's a request for show of hands. If you vote yes, you're raising your hand to table the matter. Show of hands. One, two, three, four, four. So, I was correct. The motion to table fails. We're back to...
As a package, send it to Charter and Rules.
Mr. President? If I could make this a little bit more simpler. Item A cannot go to Charter and Rules. Item A eventually has to go to finance. I see no reason why we don't have, we cannot table item A. This is language that is the bond itself. We're not prepared to talk about that until charters and rules finishes their debate on the question for the ballot itself. If they want a copy of it, that's up to them.
There's one issue here that I've been trying to get. I know you're all asking questions, but there really, no one's presented this to us.
There's no author.
There's no author. That was my first point. There is nothing on here. It's just language.
Mr. President?
No from Counselor McGivern, no from such and such.
So, it's out of order, then?
That was my point to begin with.
So, we can't even take it up anyhow.
All right, so we're missing, okay. So, with that, we do have an email that says it's a late file. It's just not attached, of which Counselor McGivern is saying, "Late File A is not an emergency, therefore, can carry on to the next agenda."
Correct.
Next meeting.
It's a bond request. We know it's coming, we, one way or the other, if we're gonna vote on it, it is what would pay for the two middle school projects. How we're gonna pay for it is obviously the real debate that's going on. My name should be on top of that, as all bond requests would be. I received that email today with an apology from our law department, because someone was not around, didn't meet the deadline on Friday. I don't see why it can't remain and be on the next agenda, but I will sign my name to it.
Counselor Ersburgos.
I think I'd like to have Legal shed some light on something.
Motion is to suspend the rules.
To suspend the rules and...
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? To Legal.
So, I've been in conversation with bond counsel. The best way to go about this is to approve the bond contingent on the ballot vote going through. So, you almost want to approve the bond first, and that bond will not pass unless the ballot question passes. But if you pass the ballot, the election gets set in motion, and there's no way to rescind that election from happening. And then if you don't approve the bond, we have no way to pay after the election approves the building of a new school. So, you need to almost do the bond first, contingent on the ballot question passing.
Mr. President? Counselor Vacan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I object to this process and this order in the strongest terms I can possibly think of. For this to come in as a late file, there's no emergency here. This is in total violation of the spirit, not the law, of the open meeting law. There is great interest in this matter in the community. For this to be coming in as a late file is an insult to the thinking, voting citizens of our city. This needs to be on the regular public agenda. And the idea that this body is gonna approve a bond for $132 million before there's even a decision made if we're gonna have a ballot question is putting the cart so far in front of the horse. I don't even want to go there. And if there's anybody on this body thinking that you're gonna vote to put the ballot question on and say, "Well, we need to leave it up to the voters," well, if you're gonna vote for the bond approval before it goes on the ballot, well, I guess you can't use that argument anymore. This is just an affront. I cannot say it any other way, and I urge the body, put this on the regular agenda where it should have been. Nothing came into the city before noon on Friday relative to this language. My records show it came in shortly afternoon on Friday. So, it was late out the gate. There's no emergency here. There's no need to do anything except the public business in public. Thank you.
Counselor, was it President?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I'll be very quick, because we have a long agenda, but I just wanted, I mean, there's a couple of questions I have about this, and it was actually noticed by Counselor Leacy as well. The bond and the ballot question, say, elementary school, is that a middle school? I mean, I don't know. I mean, the gentleman that filed the order called it a middle school. So, I'm just kind of questioning whether or not that's even the right language. Again, and then we have, again, we have it as a special election on September 24th and not on a regular ballot. Everyone seems to assume that this question is going to be on the ballot, and we don't know that for a fact. We haven't voted on that. The spirit of the rule in our legislative branch right here, it's emergency order. The DEP is gonna fine us tomorrow if we don't allocate $50,000 to do A, B, C, and D. This is not an emergency order. We have a meeting in two weeks. There's no summer break. There's no, this can be on, everyone sees the social media outcry on this matter, as well as regular media, as well as you can't go anywhere in the city of Hoyoke, and there isn't someone approaching you to talk about the school project. So, to think that, you know, I got this at 2:30 or 3:30 today, and I don't fault anyone, and I don't think it's subterfuge, or, you know, I'm not a conspiracy theorist, but the fact of the matter is, and I would defer to the president, this is not an emergency order. This can go on the regular ballot. Everyone can think about it for two weeks. We can have it on the ballot, on our regular, normal agenda. The public's aware of it. Ironically enough, the website for our city council was down today, so no one could even see the agenda. So, hopefully, that'll be rectified, and they will be able to see the agenda. But this is a perfect order to be on the agenda, so the public is fully aware of what's happening and what we're talking about, as opposed to a late-filed order that is not an emergency. Thank you.
Counselor Leacy, then Counselor McGivern.
Thank you. I think that Counselor McGivern made a great point, that bond language usually comes through to finance. However, the ballot language, as Counselor McGee noted earlier, has been requested by the Charter and Rules Committee so that they have a conversation on some concrete variables that have been in play. And so, that's what the ballot language order, Late File B, does, and it's really just a communication. It's not an order. This is, the order was filed in November by Counselor McGivern. The order doesn't have the formula language that the DOR requires of us, and that's what our legal counsel did. And yes, there were a couple typos in it, because I understand it coming from a boilerplate, but as far as I understand, they've been corrected and resubmitted. But we need to have some concrete language, some concrete dates, some concrete numbers in front of us in order to move the discussion forward. To say that we're gonna table this information is highly obstructionist. This is the information that we need in order to move forward. And according to the, the way that the ballot language, I'm sorry, the way that the ballot vote takes place, we do need to have the bond approved going in. So, whether or not you approve the bond doesn't mean that you're going to approve the ballot language or vote for the ballot itself. These are all discrete pieces of the puzzle here, and if you're going to hold up any one piece of the puzzle, then you're not giving the voters a chance to weigh in, and you're being obstructionist, which means you're going to be, you know, withholding that opportunity from the voters to weigh in on this, one way or another. It means that you're deciding for all the people out there what's going to happen on this item. And I understand there's some people in this room that don't want to, you know, let the people have their say on this, and they have the power, people in this room have the power to keep the ballot language out of the public arena. But that is, just so that we're really clear, that is an obstructionist tactic. You're not giving the citizens, the residents, the business owners of this community an opportunity to weigh in on this really important decision that we have before us.
Counselor McGivern.
Thank you. I got lost there, Mr. President, for a second, because I, I thought I was, I thought I was playing by the rules here, because what I said was originally, what I'm saying the second time. Now, the third time is, item number A, there's no secret to the number. You know, it's the number we've been talking about for two years. We voted to spend $1.1 million to get to this point. We've spent $1.1 million of taxpayers' dollars to do a project, to design it, and to talk about pre-development stuff to get to this point. I don't know if I'm gonna vote in favor of this bond, because I don't like the idea of what we're hearing coming down the pike about what reimbursement is about and what it should be. However, there is no secret to this number. There's nothing obstructionist. There is nothing that is trying to circumvent anyone. But I just said two minutes ago, take item A, lay it on the table for our next agenda. Then it goes to the Committee on Finance. We will catch up. The Committee on Finance has been on this more than any committee has. The Charter and Rules Committee has their right to finish their due diligence on the proposal of a ballot question. That's important. So, let's just lay A on the table. I agree with what everyone said. I think it's overkill. Lay it on the table, and we'll bring it up the next meeting, get it into finance, and be prepared when necessary to take a vote on it, if it requires a vote.
Counselor, I might have missed it earlier. Did you say you were contacted by Legal with regards to this?
I received the same email everybody did. If you read into the email, there's a trail that says, "Joe, can we put your name on this?"
So, okay, that's my point. So, you are the maker of this order.
I will sign both orders.
So, you are, as the maker of order, saying it is not an emergency, and you would like it to be sent to...
Item A.
Finance, item A.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That is the rule under 44.
In item B, I would make a motion that we refer to Charter and Rules. This could just go directly to Charter and Rules, is what they've been asking for. They can modify the original order, which is under my name, to put the correct language that came from the state, which I believe was not known at the time when the mayor asked me to file the original language, so our discussion could take place. I'm not looking to debate it. I'm just asking that we give it to Charter and Rules so they can finish their due diligence and their debate on the question itself.
So, this is also under your name?
Correct.
And therefore, you're saying it is non-emergency, and therefore, you're referring it to committee?
Correct.
Actually, it's...
Our rules allow us to refer to committee, not emergencies.
They do, they are. And that's what we can take up and refer to committee. The real issue with B, under my view of this, is that it should have went straight to Charter and Rules, because that is what we requested as the committee. It shouldn't have had to come in this way, but I understand Counselor McGivern, he was the original maker of the order. He's now saying that he's, in essence, putting the proper question from what he originally gave, and therefore, is trying to comply with what we asked in Charter and Rules. Counselor Vacan, you had a question?
Yes.
So, this, since it's a non-emergency from the maker of the order, trying to redo what he originally filed, it is to send to Charter and Rules. All those in favor? All opposed? Counselor Murphy?
Almost the president. I just said Counselor Murphy.
Yeah, I just, two things. Number one, and first of all, the date on there is not something that we requested, and it's certainly not a date that I would ever go along with, and I think there would be a date that would make the city clerk's life pretty miserable, as well as, again, put us in a situation where we're getting very few voters deciding on an issue for everybody. Second thing, and maybe I'm totally off here, but I don't think, I don't take my job as, this is it, I have to take this, and that's the only thing I can do. I've been trying to find, are there alternatives that can serve the city, provide us improved educational opportunities, and do so without putting an excessive burden on our businesses? And therefore, I'm not of the opinion that there is only one choice that we have to be able to submit a ballot. And if I'm wrong, then, you know, I've been doing an awful lot of work for nothing, because there are a lot of issues that need to be determined, and I don't necessarily think it's either this or nothing, that there might be something that we can do that is far more economically feasible and still provides educational quality. And I certainly, if we'd put anything on the ballot, whatever that question is, I think that question needs to be put on in November and not in September. So, again, I don't know where that date came from. It wasn't something that I know we asked for, but I would definitely take it up in committee.
I would say in committee, you can debate the date.
We're not even supposed to be debating at this point in time.
Mr. President?
I'll give, Counselor Vacan, yes?
I just have a point of information. Would you please read the late-file order into the record?
So, the late file is to approve the calling of the debt exclusion ballot question. The following order can be used. Resolution order pursuant to the provisions of General Law 59, Section 21(c), this blank date of blank, 2019, that the city of Hoyoke pursuant to General Law 59, Section 21(c), shall seek voter's approval for a special election on September 24, 2019, in assessing taxes in excess of the amount allowed under General Law 59, Section 21(c) for the payment of principal of interest in bonds, notes, and certificates of indebtedness issued by the city of Hoyoke to pay cost of design, construction, furnishing, and equipment of a new elementary school, approximately 105,000, 170 square feet, more or less, to be constructed on the open-book bond by Cabot, Chestnut, Hampshire, and Elm Street in Hoyoke, and a new elementary school, approximately 170,038 square feet, more or less, be constructed on the site of the existing William Peck School located at 1960 North Hampton Street in Hoyoke, Massachusetts, including payment of all costs incidental related to. Then, part two says, "To the end, the city clerk is hereby directed to place the following question on the ballot. Shall the city of Hoyoke be allowed to exempt from the provisions of proposition two and a half, so-called the amount required to pay for the bond issued in order to pay cost in design, construction, furnishing, and equipment of new elementary school of approximately..." And actually, they give the wrong square footage again from above, but same spot, Cabot, Chestnut, Hampshire Street, and Hoyoke, Mass., and new elementary school be constructed at the Peck Middle School located at 1960 North Hampton Street, including the payment of all incidental related thereto. Yes, no? That's the reading. The maker of the order has asked that it be sent to Charter and Rules. With that, I did say, "All those in favor?"
I did have my hand up.
Counselor?
I did have my hand, just if I may, Mr. President, just to the chair. Counselor Murphy, when is the next Charter and Rules meeting?
We haven't got one scheduled as of yet.
That's what I thought. That's point one. So, we've got an emergency that's not even an emergency, because he doesn't have a Charter and Rules meeting scheduled. Second point, to say that this is obstructionist, Mr. President, is to say that the open meeting law is obstructionist. To say that we have a printed agenda with words that mean something for the public to read, that's almost saying that that's obstructionist. I guess in terms of those who favor good government, or those, maybe, or those who oppose good government, maybe that is obstructionist, Mr. President. To say that words on a printed agenda don't mean anything, that's what's being said. So, a ballot question, a ballot question goes through this body without being on a printed agenda, goes to a committee meeting that's not even scheduled. This is beautiful. So, now, Mr. President, if we're keeping tally, we've had one resolution this body voted on without the ballot question in front of us. We had a second one tonight without the resolution in front of us, so now we got the trifecta, perfect timing for the Kentucky Derby fans. We've got the trifecta, the third one, without the language in front of us. But that's obstructionist, Mr. President. That's the definition of obstruction. Nonsense, nonsense. But you can already see the political play. I mean, those of us, those of us that care about the city of Hoyoke and its finances, those of us that care about the city of Hoyoke and its finances have a certain opinion on this. But the other side, should this not go on the ballot, well, we didn't give the voters a voice. But that's not what the general law says, Mr. President. The general law clearly states that if the city council votes to put it on the ballot, the city council endorses it. But it's obstructionist. This is not a laboratory in democracy, Mr. President, to put a ballot question of this nature put to the voters. of this nature, put it to the voters. The city council, by voting for it, says we endorse the ballot question. That, read the general law, that's what the law says. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor McGivern.
On a different note, Mr. President, because again, we should not be debating, I just want to commend Counselor Murphy and the, and the Charter and Rules Committee, and all city councilors who have a passion for this issue, because I think it's a very important issue, and I think the fact that the language is coming in is important for whenever the next Charter and Rules Committee is, is ready to take up the language, and I think it would be a delay if we didn't give them the, the language that they've, they asked for when they found out the original language was incorrect. But what I really want to point out is just procedural, and you know, and I think everybody here knows, that these items, including like about fifteen items coming up on the agenda under the chairman of the Finance Committee, are not the chairman of the Finance Committee's orders. They are courtesy because we do not allow the mayor of the City of Hoyok to put items on our agenda. We don't, we've never changed the charter, like most communities have, to allow the mayor, who is the appropriating authority, to request this body to agree or disagree with them. These are orders that are filed on behalf of the mayor and the department heads of this city to put them in front of this body for debate. They're not a commitment, whenever they're coming in under any chairman of the Finance's name, they're not, they're not a commitment by us that we're going to vote in favor of them. It's, 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 it's the purpose of to get them in and have a healthy debate on an item that's been going around for two years. There is no open meaning law violations here. We are not asking for a vote this evening, other than to put it into committee where it's been for a year and a half already. I think what Counselor Murphy is doing, he came to me before he started the process on this, and he told me what he wanted to do, and I think it's been a wonderful and healthy debate about a lot of issues that surround this, this proposal, and I think it should continue until we're ready to vote one way or the other. I hope there are other options. We got, we got a report coming out of Finance from last week, an option that was explored. But there's, those options are fuel and fire between, and I think, just for the purpose of keeping the discussion going, let's make a motion, move the question, refers to Charter and Rules.
Motion is to move the question to Charter and Rules, or a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Can I just?
Can I not speak on it?
I, I did have my hand up, I think I was in queue before.
There was a motion to move, so we did that. Counselor Leacy.
Thank you. Um, I, I do want to just say, I think Counselor McGivern made his points very eloquently, and we should move the question. I just don't appreciate the straw man arguments about how one group is like for good government and the other group is not for good government, because this is, again, not a violation of open meeting law. We actually have a provision, the Counselor Bartley filed, and we all passed, that all our late filed orders actually come on to the next agenda as an addendum, and really, I mean, it's not new language, it's not a new order. It's a communication that puts this very large and abstract financial discussion that we're having into concrete numbers, concrete dates, concrete terms, and that's the world that we need to live in. We can't just be having, you know, the what ifs and the if could, and, and, you know, we, we, we basically had an entire meeting in Charter and Rules Committee last time without the language in front of us. I mean, how, how crazy is that? Do we have, I mean, to the, to the point that was raised earlier, like, we don't have a, a meeting scheduled yet for the next Charter and Rules Committee meeting, but do we have a meeting scheduled yet for public service or public safety? No, it's like when the orders are generated, then we, we build an agenda and we act on them. Right now, our, our, you know, our Charter and Rules Committee has been acting on an order without the full language and full information in front of them, and it's a disservice to the committee, it's a disservice to the public. Let's get the language in front of them and, and work in concrete terms.
Counselor Leahy.
Yeah, thank you. So I'm going to vote for it to go to committee, Charter and Rules, because I've been to the meetings, I watch the meetings on TV, I have re-watched them. Chairperson Murphy is doing a fantastic job, he's doing a, a great job. I don't think that this should be a late file, I don't think it should have been done Friday, it should have been done probably, you know, many days ago, so this should have been on the agenda as well. My big concern is, quite frankly, we're voting on something to move to committee that contains typos. Not that I'm perfect by any sense of the, of the word, but I, you know, what else is there that we haven't seen in this? So I think that we're going to have to do even more due diligence, because it's, you know, if it's boilerplate information, I want to make sure that when we do have something in front of us, it contains the actual truth for the City of Hoyok. Thank you.
Counselor Murphy.
Yeah, I was gonna not say anything, but, I mean, again, the Charter and Rules have this exact language when we were talking, no, we did not, but we certainly have the major gist of the arguments, pro and con, and we were, we are discussing them, so to say that we're wasting our time or not doing, not doing what's necessary in order to move the question, I, I won't vote to move the question until I think it's the right question. And I think there are still a number of questions that have to be asked, and including what, in fact, our school is going to do for the next three years, which they don't know. Could we do it without building two schools, which the argument is, we only can do, it has to be two schools, and yet, you know, as I asked the other day, Veritas is, at this point, contracted to have five hundred students in three years. Are we, are we then planning on eliminating that contract, and if not, I'm assuming we're putting them in one school? And right now, they're in Peck, and from what I saw in my visit, they're doing pretty well. So there are options, and it doesn't necessarily mean the only option we have is a hundred and thirty-one million dollars, and it may be, but that certainly has not been proven to me from an educational standpoint, nor from a financial standpoint, and I'm going to keep at the Charter and Rules Committee asking questions, and I continue to discuss with the Massachusetts School Billing Authority, I've had communication with the Board, Board of Education for a second time, as they are now asking me some additional questions. So there's a lot of things out there that are still issues to be discussed before a final vote, and I, you know, you can give me all the language in the world, but until the, those information goes, I'm not, and it's not, I don't feel that's obstruction or anything along that line, I feel that's educational, and try to make sure, if this does go to voters, whatever goes to voters, they're going to be as informed of all the ramifications as possible. Thank you.
So the motion is to send to committee for debate? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
As have it.
Mr. President?
Counselor Bacon.
Um, I would like to make a request that the full publication be added on our next agenda as a communication of the information that you read into the microphone, that includes the bond language, and the spreadsheet that was given to us from the proponent of the project.
Everything that came in will go on as, as we normally do, as a late file. So it'll be on the next agenda as a copy, saying what we took up as late files. That's what we do.
In that format, it only shows like at the very end of the meeting, buried in all these minutes, it won't be
A communication from the law department.
Like when we see it and it's all printed out on the agenda, and my motion is so that the public that's looking at our agenda will be able to see the language.
So attaching that at the end of the agenda for the next agenda, is that what you're asking, Counselor?
Yes, so that the
No, communication.
As, I want it laid out as the communication, so that it can be seen by the public that wants to look at the agenda. We've had agendas in the past where the whole resolution is all printed out.
Okay, so we'll have them attach the whole communication to the back of the agenda with regards to both. A and B.
A and B.
A is going to be?
A is going to be on the agenda.
Just B.
Oh, then B.
That's right, thank you, Brenner, yeah.
Yeah, B's going to Charter and Rules, that one with?
But we're taking it in as a communication, and I want that communication pleased to be printed in full on the record.
I understand what you're saying.
Thank you.
All right.
So, oh, Counselor. Go ahead, are we done with that one?
Well, that one's done, we're going back to seven.
I was going to make a motion if we could take items number seven, eight, nine, and ten, and send to Public Service, and working with Ryan to having an upcoming meeting.
Motion would be suspend the rules, take up
It's just seven and eight.
Seven and eight for Public Service.
Seven and eight.
The motion is to take up seven and eight, which is appointments to
And ten, right?
And ten.
You want a ten, right?
Seven, eight, and ten.
Can we do seven and eight as one, I'm, I'm abstaining from those because of family, but I don't need to abstain on ten.
Okay, so motions take up seven as a package, suspend the rules, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It's an appointment to HEDIC, and eight is an appointment to the Hoyok Housing Authority, sending those to Public
Service.
Service. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? With one abstention. Nine is the minutes of the April sixteenth meeting.
Make a motion, receive.
Motion is to receive, it's no changes, all good. All those in favor? All opposed?
Make a motion, nine.
Ten is
Send to Public Service.
Second.
Is to take
What's that? Just a copy.
It's a, um, Chair of the Board of Health Commission letter appointing a director for the Board of Health, and send a communication to Public Service. All those in favor?
All right.
Opposed?
Make a motion, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, be received.
Motion is to take eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen as a package and to receive them, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So eleven is Board of, Board of Health minutes, twelve is Sewer Commission Storm Water minutes, thirteen is Fire Commission minutes, and TG Animal Control minutes. Petitions, petition for a new special permit for three eighty Dwight Street to ordinance. Ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Sixteen
EGR.
Is a petition of Mount Tom, and that's for the Flood Overlay District at two hundred North Hampton Street, and that's going to DGNR. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seventeen
Suspend the rules to take up seventeen through twenty-one, all renewals?
Subject to, uh
To the taxes.
All right, so seventeen to twenty-one, suspend the rules, take up as a package, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seventeen is forty-five Longwood Ave., which is a hair salon renewal. All taxes current. Eighteen is secondhand license at two-two-three-five North Hampton Street, all taxes are current. Nineteen is Record Town, which is the mall, fifty Hoyok Street, all taxes are current. Twenty-one is secondhand license sixty-eight Cherry, all those are current. And then the last one, twenty-one, is a secondhand license at three-eleven High Street, and they are all paid up. So motion is to approve and grant the renewals with their, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Twenty-two is a petition
Need a roll call, Mr. President.
First, what?
We need a roll call.
Roll call for that.
Oh, we need roll calls for, oh, secondhand license, yeah. So we're going to take them up as a package, so we're going to do a roll call for all of them, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one. Clerk of Call of Law, if you're voting yes, you're voting for all the renewals.
Bartley?
Yes.
Resnahan? Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Leacy?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tolman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Twelve VAs.
With your vote, you approve the
Mr. President, can we take twenty-two, twenty-three suspended rules taken as package, put them on board, please?
Motion is take up twenty-two and twenty-three as a package, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And they're going to
Ordinance.
Ordinance, which is street vendor license, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? President's report, just to be quick, um, one, I want to give a thank you out to the Park and Rec Department for their Easter event, um, it was absolutely pouring outside, and they did a phenomenal job of getting the people indoors and making it a very nice event for the kids, so I just want to thank them for all the hard work, I mean, it was raining harder than what it is right now. Also, I want to recognize our city counselor, Counselor Valentine, she is going to be awarded next city council meeting, so you're going to be late.
Yep.
But we don't want to miss it, so if you come in late, we're going to recognize you now for receiving the Community Champion Award by the Latino Scholarship Fund of Western Mass. Did I say this correct?
Yep.
Well, I would say congratulations very much, everyone.
Thank you.
On a sad note, we did receive news that our former city administrator, Dave Welch, passed away. Funeral services will be this Friday from four to seven, and then mass, the funeral on Saturday, be at Berry J. Farrell, ask that we do send flowers from the flower fund to the family, he was a great person. One thing I'll remember most is when we had our events outside a city council, and we got together for our
Okay, the wake
Council, uh, party at the end of the year, phenomenal singing voice, he was just a wonderful man. And also, we lost Thomas O'Sullivan, another friend of the council, and I know him well from his winning the Tippi Ryan event up at, former, up at Hoyok Community, uh, Hoyok Community Country Club. Two gentlemen that we lost, I would like to ask for a moment of silence for, for these two individuals. Thank you. And actually, it's Hoyok Country Club, I kept saying community, I, I'm back to school, Jim, I'm back to
There you go. Can I say a couple things, Todd?
Uh, and open up, Counselor Leahy?
Yeah, thank you. So tonight, um, the great city of Hoyok was mentioned tonight at the Red Sox, the Red Sox are playing Baltimore, I believe it's, uh, Red Sox three, Baltimore two, at the bottom of the fourth. Dave O'Brien, the commentator for Nessun, uh, mentioned Hoyok because Baltimore has Trey Mancini playing for him, who started at the Blue Sox, uh, so the Hoyok, Hoyok Blue Sox got a good plug tonight, I wanted to mention that. Um, I also certainly wanted to follow up with Todd's comments regarding Thomas Sullivan, Dave Welch, both great, tremendous men. And the last thing I want to bring up tonight is a very special announcement that we, uh, we have somebody's birthday, um, uh, in this room, our own city solicitor, Crystal Barnes, is celebrating a birthday tonight, so I just wanted to wish her a happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
What are you doing here?
Motion to adjourn, oh, no, yeah.
Todd?
Counselor Sullivan.
Yeah, and just a quick note for everybody, and I, well, I mentioned if you get a chance to look at the Hello Hoyok page, but, uh, the Paper City Basketball Team had three tournaments this weekend for three different age groups, and they placed first in two of the tournaments, and second in one of them. One was in Providence, Rhode Island, one was in Waltham, and the other was up in, up in Danvers, Mass.
All those donuts.
It's a donut.
That was a candy.
They, and they enjoyed some candy at my brother's store, too.
Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. At a earlier meeting this year, our, this council unanimously adopted a, a public, a public street to be renamed as a public way, um, for, in memory of, but also in, in memory of a career, an educational career of Mrs. Ma Boyle. That ceremony will be taking place to unveil that on May eighteenth, about four-thirty in the afternoon, across, next to Hoyok Catholic, the old Hoyok Catholic, across from Saint Jerome's Church, and I am sure if anybody's interested, the, everybody would be welcome to, to attend. It'll be a very brief and quick ceremony, it's in conjunction with some of the family members, and a class reunion of one of the family members.
So May eighteenth, what time?
About four-thirty. There's a four o'clock mass, so it'll be right after four o'clock mass, I, I shouldn't say this publicly, but we all know Saint Jerome's four o'clock mass is the twenty-five minute mass.
So, just later on, May eighteenth at about four-thirty. Council Murphy?
Yeah, just, uh, two things. Uh, this weekend was the neighborhood cleanup. I know in Churchill and South Hoyok, the flats, and I think part of Ward Six, if I'm not mistaken, and and, uh, you know, a couple of things, I wanna congratulate the people that did it. I wanna thank the police cadets from Springfield Police Academy. I think there were forty police cadets that came and, and were, were cleaning in all the various neighborhoods. And I also would like to thank Domino Pizza, who just heard about it and came and donated pizza at the end of the event, which I thought was pretty, uh, amazing. And I also wanna let you know that this Thursday night at Morgan School at six-thirty, uh, we're having a, uh, chicken, rice, and salad, but the Housing Authority is gonna be down there to begin the discussions on the revitalization of housing, starting with the Carlos Vega Park area and working through the rest of South Hoyok, so you're all invited.
Council Lisi?
No, just regular order.
Okay.
Yeah, ready for it?
Yeah.
Uh, like to suspend the rules and take up item number forty-eight, uh, out of order.
Second?
Second.
Forty-eight. Forty-eight from Council Lisi, uh, Council LeBron Martinez, that the city council consider amending the marijuana ordinance to allow, uh, twenty-four hour, um, business. Uh, there have been several applicants already who have expressed interest in operating a business model that includes three shifts and additional jobs for our residents through ordinance?
Yep, ordinance. Um, and just to be clear, for anyone who's watching without an agenda, it's for the cultivation manufacturing, um, facilities alone that I'm looking for that, uh, twenty-four hour operation.
Yep. So, motion is to send to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
And could you add my name to that order, too?
Adding Council Sullivan, Council McGee. To forty-eight, it's in ordinance. Back to reports of committee. We did twenty-four A and B. We're on to C. Committee on Orange has referred that there be no parking from here to corner sign.
Where's my mic? C through K, please, as a package. They're all amendments to the traffic ordinance, and I think it's easy enough to just read them and understand them.
So, twenty-four C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, and K as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So, twenty-four C was, uh, no parking by one Elm Street. Recommended that be adopted. It's by the court, New Juvenile Courthouse. Ordinance for twenty-four D, that a handicap sign be removed from morning, one forty-five Essex Street. An individual has moved. Twenty-four E, Committee on Orange has referred that no parking from corner sign be placed, uh, northbound, uh, Jarvis Ave, twenty feet. Entrance to Daybrook Valley, no parking in front of United Bank on North Hampton Street. Recommended be adopted. Uh, twenty-four F, that the DPW removed a handicap parking at fourteen Center Street uh, with the approval from the Disability Commission. Recommended to be adopted. Uh, twenty-four G, that Mr. Douglas, uh, at Belvedere Ave, um, for his bride of fifty-two years, Mr. Wilkinson, who, who now is eighty-three year old, had a major medical setback, was brought a handicap placard. We filed an order to have the handicap spot placed in front of forty-eight, so we're moving it to forty-eight Belvedere. Recommended that, that be adopted. Twenty-four H is that a handicap sign, uh, be placed at two ninety Chestnut Street. That be adopted. Twenty-four I is that a handicap sign be placed in the front of one twenty-seven Beach Street. Recommended that that be adopted. Twenty-four J is that a no parking be allowed on the odd number side of Jackson Street from the corner of South Bridge Street to the alleyway. Recommended that that be adopted. And twenty-four K is that the city council or DPW, uh, change an ordinance on the right of way would affect the day-to-day operations of the Police Department, Fire Department. Um, barriers set up at Ashley Neighborhood or reducing speed limits through the city. Recommended that been complied with. Can I get them all?
Yes, so, Mr. President.
So, to the chair, what would you like to do?
Four items, twenty-four C through twenty-four J. They will all need first and second readings. So, I'd offer a motion to pass the first reading for all of those.
So, twenty-four C, D, E,
C.
F, and G.
H, I, and J.
H, I, and J.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
Recom, uh, so that it's that they pass the first reading.
Right, and these were all pretty routine. They went through the proper steps and recommendations and were not controversial.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is to pass the second reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion that the passage be
Motion that the passage be ordained. The clerk of Call of Roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for twenty-four C to J.
Bartley? Brezneren? Leahy? LeBron Martinez?
Here. I'm, yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine? Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Where's everybody?
I know.
Yeah. Would your vote approve twenty-four C to J?
Check it in the back.
So, for
Check it in the back room.
Coffee break. Uh, twenty-four K?
Um, I can only, as a point of information, let you know that Council Bartley left because he was unwell.
Okay, so
Um, for twenty-four K, the motion is to receive and adopt the committee report.
Twenty-four K is that the order has been complied with. Motion is to receive and adopt. Under discussion?
Um, our engineer, um, Bob Parent was here, and he said they'd had very good coordination all the way through, except, I guess, right up to the point where the actual barriers had gone up, and so there was a little skip, so. He apologized and, you know.
It's been complied.
But they, they had been coordinating very well.
Okay, so
Ninety-nine percent of the time, so. It will be careful in the future.
Okay, so motion is that it's been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Twenty-five is Committee on Finance. Twenty-five A, the Committee on Finance has referred in order that the Retirement Board, Mayor, Treasurer, Bond Council, along with the Manager, Hoyok Gas Electric, be invited to a meeting of finance to discuss the pension obligation bonds. Recommend that the order be complied with.
Make a motion to receive and adopt.
Motion is that the order be received and adopted and comply with. Under discussion, Council McGivern?
Uh, very quickly, we, uh, did have a wonderful attendance for this meeting, uh, which took place early in the night to accommodate our, uh, our financial analysis. Cinder McNary from Hilltop Securities, who was here with her assistant. A presentation was made by, uh, by both, um, our current auditor with the, uh, with the, the help of our, our former acting auditor, Mr. Bellamy Smith, and, uh, Tanya, you know, went through the entire, as we know, auditors do serve on the retirement board itself. Went through the entire, um, uh, request of which was Council Sullivan to, uh, to review the, uh, what, what pension bond obligations, uh, would, could actually do and if they could help the city in, not just one way, but in, in more than one way, which I'll explain quickly. Um, the presentation was, was brief and it kinda went into what our unfunded liability was, and that's how you would, would work a pension bond obligation. Currently, we're on a thirteen-year schedule to fully fund the liability of the, uh, of the pension system itself. Um, that amount is close to a hundred and eighteen million dollars. As, I think we all know, we've been paying extra every year to catch up to, uh, speed, which is required both by law and is also prudent. If the city were to bond, um, for that amount, we could quickly find ourselves in a position where there would be extra monies to, uh, to borrow off of, extra monies to invest, and extra monies that would be available through the pension bond obligation, uh, formula itself. Um, the, the Gas and Electric and the Water Department, you know, the Gas and Electric had a, the, uh, the superintendent here interested to learn more about, you know, how this works. Uh, we also had our, our director, Cheryl Dougray, along with, uh, Jack McCarthy, one of, one of the longtime, uh, members of the commission itself. Um, our assessor and, um, our, our treasurer were here all to answer questions and to talk about this subject. Uh, after learning about how it works through the presentation, uh, everybody weighed in. Um, there are risks. Uh, some considered a risk far higher than the potential of, 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 of pension bonds, uh, obligations, uh, including our, our Director of Retirement and including the, uh, the board member that was present. And by that is because if you, you know, re, one of the ways that we exist, and we're one of the few and, and one of the better, um, investment of, of gentleman by the name of Ray DePelto, who used to be the Retirement Director, um, has been our investment advisor for the pension monies themselves. And we've, the, the Board of Retirement and the Retirement, uh, Department itself has had tremendous success. But when you're investing money, it's never guaranteed. And one of the risks that was pointed out, if, if the money was ever, um, if there was ever, and there has been some years where there's been a loss or a break even, that would actually create a additional unfunded liability obligation to the city itself. Uh, there was a numerous, as part of the presentation, a number of communities in Massachusetts that have attempted this. Uh, a couple that have been somewhat successful, some that have been not successful. And what we're asking, and because there was, by the end of the meeting, there was ten to eleven city councilors present. Uh, at the beginning of the meeting, there was nine city councilors present, and I know a couple who could not be there, at least one I know, they'd watched the, uh, the meeting on TV. I think the information was provided as requested through Council Sullivan's order, and the committee is asking that the order be now considered complied with.
Council Lisi?
Uh, I just wanted to, uh, recognize and commend Council Sullivan for proposing, um, this option. Uh, I, I was interested in understanding what it could do for the city, but it seems that, um, it's actually, um, just too risky um, for the city to manage, uh, its pension li- liability in this way and could, uh, do more damage in the, in the long run. But I thought it was creative. I thought it was thinking outside of the box, um, and, um, I was happy to learn about it. So, thank you to, uh, Council Sullivan.
Council Sullivan?
Yeah, uh, thanks. Uh, as usual, Councilor McGivern has done a great job of summing it up. I don't have much to add, except all the information provided to us, and especially as far as the risk factor, that information terminated as of four years ago. So, any information we were studying or looking at, as far as what happened in other city, all that information, nothing that is current after twenty fifteen. So, there, there, it, it was a great presentation. We did learn a lot, but, um, the, it, it's a good step forward, and it may be something to resurface to look at again in the future.
Go for the discussion. Motion that's been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? There was no public safety, no public service, no DGNR, no charter and rules. Oh, actually, no, there is charter and rules, sorry. Twenty-nine A, Committee on Charter and Rules was referred in order that section nineteen of the city charter be amended to read, "The mayor shall appoint three persons to be a fire commissioner, subject to city council confirmation. Have considered shame, recommended that the order be adopted."
Make motion the committee report be received and adopted?
Motion is that the committee report be received and adopted. Under discussion, Council Murphy?
Just, uh, the committee was unanimous, uh, in believing that, uh, if the mayor would, uh, appoint, and we would have the authority to, uh, confirm the fire commission and excuse me, but just, uh, I think the committee was pretty unanimous, Council Sullivan, and I think Council Bartley ended up signing that order as well, so. Uh, you know, I think we're pretty solid in support of it.
May further discussions? Motion is that it be, uh, received and adopted. Do we need a roll call for this one, or?
Yes, definitely.
Alright, so clerk of call roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for twenty-nine A.
Brezneren?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approve twenty-nine A. Uh, no joint, uh, city council and school committee off to orders and resolutions. Uh, this will be the vacant hour.
I'm trying to get it organized to do it.
You tell me what you would like, Council.
Um, so for item thirty-one, receive and refer to our clerk and registrar voters.
Oh, I, I thought you were gonna start packaging stuff. Okay, so thirty-one, alright, alright. Thirty-one is from Council Bacon, uh, that the registered voter list be, uh, updated for accuracy in accordance with the census rule, so receive and refer to
Our city clerk.
To the city clerk, voters' office. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you. So, um, and if I could, um, package items thirty-two through thirty-five to receive, adopt, and refer to DPW?
Second.
And our city engineer?
This motion is to suspend rules, take up as a package thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, and thirty-five. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-two, do limited funding for full approval projects to, uh, Ashley and Sunset Road, uh, be closed uh, first as soon as possible. That's thirty-two. Uh, that a do not block the box be painted across from the driveway of the plaza at Twin Heart and Dino's on Homestead Ave. Uh, thirty-four, DPW evaluate the overflow sewer drain at forty-two Norwood Circle. Uh, thirty-five, that the intersection of Farm Drive and, uh, Williams Road be evaluated and recommendations for improving safety for drivers, uh, using the bus service. Motion is to receive, adopt thirty-two to thirty-five and refer to DPW?
Yes, please.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-six. It's from Council Bacon, that the Health Department and Building Commissioner, um, cause illegal temporary housing tents uh, anywhere in the city piles, uh, the street and outdoor, such should be used in the bathrooms as soon as possible, so the, that the health, or
So, the motion would be to receive and adapt and refer to the Health Department and the Building Commissioner?
Okay, so you, so you want it, receive, adopt, refer to Health Department, uh, Building Commissioner. Do you want a copy to
A public safety, please.
Public safety for our communication?
Thank you.
With a copy to public safety on thirty-six. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-seven, uh, from Council Bacon, that a, um, permanent speed feedback sign be placed near three hundred Westfield Road to reduce speeding by drivers in the area. Motion
And if, under suspension, if we could take up thirty-eight also and refer those to ordinance?
Thirty-eight is that a no parking sign be placed at Homestead Ave, uh, between Kane and Pinchon Road, uh, on the school side of Homestead Ave. So, with regards to Oh, so you wanna permit, okay, I got it. So, thirty-seven, thirty-eight would be to
To ordinance, please?
Yep. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Thirty-nine from Council, oh, we did that one?
Yep.
Forty is from Council Bartley. DPW, please, uh, resurface Argyle Ave and Merrick Ave. Um, motion be receive, adopts on the DPW?
Refer to DPW.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Argyle is awful. Bad, bad street. Needs a lot of work.
And if we could take up forty-one and forty-two as a package?
Uh, suspend the rules, take up forty-one and forty-two as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, forty-one from Council Bartley, that the city council pass a resolution in support of the work of expanding natural gas capacity in the city of Hoyok. This resolution should keep in mind the importance of protecting the environment, but should recognize the reality of expanding business and building new schools can only be done with the energy and power referred to DGNR. So, to DGNR in the forty-two is order that the Honorable City Council, in accordance to master of law thirty-B, accept the offer of one thousand for one forty-four High Street. Both to DGNR. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Could you add Sullivan to forty-one?
Adding Council Sullivan to forty-one. Forty-two from, no, that one's, uh, yep. DGNR. Forty-three from Council Brezneren, order that the DPW install, uh, slash paint a do not block the box at the intersection of North Hampton Street and Shamet Ave. Motion would be to
Receiving for the DPW.
DPW.
Second.
Second.
Receive, adopt, refer to DPW. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, forty-four from Council Brezneren, request that any money spent, uh, Roca services are presented to the city council. Motion would send to finances, maybe, or?
And Roca spelled wrong. There's no H.
What?
It's amendment on, if Roca, there's no H in Roca. Just R O C A.
Taking out the H, but referring to finance. All those in favor?
Copy to the auditor?
Sure.
I don't know who would, who would know. What department would be spending monies on Roca?
So, it is refer to finance with a copy to the auditor. All those in favor?
I think it's, uh, a copy to DPW. They're the ones who, I think, assign their projects in the community.
Alright, so you want a copy of DPW as well? So, for forty-four, it's to finance with a copy to DPW and the auditor. Forty-five is from Council LeBron Martinez, order at, uh, to allow for the development and redevelopment of properties in the areas aligned with the existing city plan, uh, bring those parcels further into conformity, and then there's a list of of properties in the areas aligned with the existing city plan, bring those parcels further into conformity. And then there's a list of, or a table with all those properties.
Receive, adopt, send to DGR?
Question is to send to DGNR. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Forty-six from Counsel Lacy, that the City Council invite in a representative from the Soldiers On as well as Veteran Services Director to discuss support services for veterans who fail to meet the requirements of Soldiers On programs.
I'm going to say this is going to public service with a copy to, or a Veteran Service Director, and I think he could help Brian reach out to the Soldier On group.
All right, so motion is to send to public service with a copy to Veteran Services Director. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Forty-seven from Counsel Lacy, that the City Council invite in the CPAC to discuss their reflection on their first round of fund disbursements, and some reasons that went this year's award selection.
Yeah, I know we talked about doing this. I don't know if anyone ever filed the order, so I thought I'd file it just for good measure. Receive and send to public service.
Second.
I do believe it was?
For Finance.
I believe, we did say it was to Finance that they were coming in, but refer to Finance.
Sure, that's fine.
Counsel McGivern?
Actually, tomorrow night, I don't think we can do this because of the open meeting law. But tomorrow night, they will begin to have that one item that we did refer to Finance, which is the Pine Street historical facade proposal.
All right, so this one, refer to Finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
The eight we did.
Forty-eight, forty-nine from Counsel Lacy, that the Assessor and Tax Collector inform the Council on how many tax exempt properties exist within the city, and provide us with a list within two weeks, three weeks? You want a timeframe, or it doesn't matter, or?
You know, I think, I would say four weeks. So maybe before we start the budget process in June. So with, three weeks, actually, three weeks.
So three weeks, and to Finance, or just a communication?
Yeah, Finance is good.
All right, motion is to?
Thanks.
Receive, refer to Finance with a copy to Assessor and Tax Collector. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Excuse me.
Oh, Counsel Sullivan, sorry.
I'd like to make a motion to reconsider our action on forty-seven. Finance, there's nothing in reflections and that, this process. It's not about a financial transfer, any financial matter. It was choosing various projects and the reasoning behind the choosing of these projects, and maybe not the choosing of others. Maybe more appropriate to go to DGNR or public service?
Second.
All right, so motion is to reconsider our actions on forty-seven. That was seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You want it to go instead of?
Public service.
To?
DG.
No, DGR gets so crowded with other things, like?
That's, all right, so?
I'll second her motion.
Yeah, it's the maker's order, too. She's asking it go into public service to have a meeting on it. It was seconded by Counsel Bacon. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So it's in public service. We are back to fifty, right?
Yep.
Yeah, all right. From Counsel Lacy, Counsel LeBron Martinez, that the Assessor Collector are develop a document that details a history of tax revenue and growth since the five year prior to the closing of the Mount Tom Power Plant.
Yeah, so just briefly under discussion, we are about five years out from the closing of the Mount Tom Power Plant, and it would be really great to just get a snapshot of what things looked like five years prior to the closing, what happened when it closed, and any, like, revenue and growth that we've had since. I think that it would just be really informative. So I'd like to see this go to, so receive?
Oh, receive, adopt, send to Assessor Collector Order.
Yep. And then with a copy to, I'm going to say Finance, because I think that they're related, those two, just getting a better sense of the city's finances.
Right, so motion is receive, adopt, send to Assessor Collector Order with a copy to Finance.
Yep, and can we add the three weeks, in three weeks to that as well?
With three weeks for this as well. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did we get forty-nine?
Yeah, forty-nine was to Finance within three weeks.
Want to sign on?
Fifty-one is from Counsel Lacy, order that DPW work with the City Council develop a process for residents to request tree pits on city sidewalks near their home. There may also be a fee associated with it.
This is going to go to public safety.
Motion is refer to public safety. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? This is the McGee Hour. From Counsel McGee, that DPW repave West Cherry Street. Motion be receive, adopt, send to DPW?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The end of McGee Hour. Fifty-three?
Mr. President, if I could help out?
Please.
Yes, please. Motion to combine the following items.
Joe, we should do fifty-five separate.
If we could do, okay. If we could combine right now, fifty-three, fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty, sixty-two, sixty-four, sixty-six, and sixty-seven, and refer each of those items to the Committee on Finance.
Second.
Right, so motion is suspend rules, take up everything that Joe just said. And I'll repeat it. So fifty-three, which is one thousand two hundred and ninety dollars and thirty-three cents from in-state travel to education and training, vet services. Fifty-six, which is police fleet mechanic, taking money from there and going to motor vehicle repairs. That's twenty-six thousand eight fifteen. Fifty-seven, from tree climber, thirty thousand to contract services for forestry. Fifty-eight is six thousand dollars from various areas to vehicle repairs. Fifty-nine is ten thousand from firefighters to lieutenants. Sixty is from E-911 dispatch, part-time clerks, eight thousand ninety-six dollars going to building maintenance and part-time dispatch. Sixty-two is from fifteen thousand eight ninety-six from firefighters to fire chief. Sixty-three is?
We did it.
No, sixty-three.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, sixty-four. I was turning the page. That the City Council, order for traffic signal replace for, approved on September fifth, be modified to include purchase and installing. For MedCath, that's one thousand, well, one million four hundred, sorry, appropriation. Sixty-six is twenty-nine thousand three twenty-four from solicitor to assistant solicitor. And sixty-seven is three thousand six hundred and twenty-three dollars from free cash to advertising. Sixty-seven, I'd like to approve tonight, if we could. That's us.
That's, I mean, I have no objection. That's?
That's us, by the way.
Yeah.
We shouldn't argue.
For advertising.
For advertising. So can we take sixty-seven out?
So moved.
Second.
So fifty-three, fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty, sixty-two, sixty-four, and sixty-six, as read, to Finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I could suspend the rules also, Mr. President, to take up fifty-four, sixty-one, and sixty-seven to adopt this evening, either as a package, or certainly fifty-four and sixty-one as a package.
All right, so fifty-four is from patrolmen to injured on duty, six thousand eight hundred and nineteen dollars and seventy-two cents. Sixty-one is from firefighters to injured on duty, that's six thousand three hundred and thirty dollars. Motion be to take them up as a package, suspend the rules, pass the first reading?
Aye.
Under discussion?
I think it goes without saying, we're going to be doing this every meeting. It's going from a salary line item to an injured on duty, same salary, same amount of dollars. It just gives accounting so we know when a police or a firefighter are off, are not, are getting paid, but are not in service because of an injury. Some of these injuries, it's only a matter of a weekend or a few days. Some are more long-term. I believe you have the amount this week.
Yep, so once again, this is standard for us. It's coming from whether it's police or fire. If you're injured on duty, we take from their patrol account and pay into injured on duty. So it's just an accounting procedure. Motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion be the pass the second reading. Clerk call roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for fifty-four and sixty-one, which is the transfer for injured on duty.
Mr. President, how many in each department?
Three.
Thanks.
Sorry, I forgot. Thank you.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lacy?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve the transfer. Sixty-seven, from Counsel McGivern, three thousand six hundred and twenty-three dollars from free cash to advertising.
Make a motion to pass the first reading?
Motion is to receive, adopt, pass the first reading?
President explained what it is. I think we all know. It's our advertising account, and certainly needed for things that we do. Just a quick note on free cash. This is the first amount of free cash that we have adopted in, since it's, you know, we adopted and balanced the budget. So currently, after this, we're still down very low, but it'd be approximately about a hundred and ten, a hundred and eleven thousand left.
So just for point of clarification, we took this up last meeting. It was a request going out that we approved for free cash for advertising because it wasn't in the budget. So we're stealing from other line items to pay for our advertising, whether it be for special permits, what have you. So this is money that should have been in the budget, and we'll address it for the next budget. So motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is to pass the second reading. Clerk call roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lacy?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Mr. President, that leaves item fifty-five, receive, refer to Committee on Finance, and we respect the Counsel Leahy's request.
Second.
Motion is to send fifty-five to Finance, and fifty-five is two thousand four hundred and eighty-eight dollars and seven thousand five hundred dollars from different line items for a grant tool of nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars to Chief Official of Wires to Finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right.
Mr. President, just real quick, courtesy, but also, I think, for all of us, I should have asked during the President's report, but in lieu of a lot of work going into the Finance Committee, as happens in May and June, do we have any word on the budget, which we're forty-five days, two weeks from now, forty-five days goes into July?
I don't have anything on the agenda. No communications?
Mr. President.
All right, sixty-nine, I do believe is what we're up to. And that's from Counsel Murphy, and that is, order that DGNR Committee meet with representatives from the Building Department, Board of Health, Planning Development Office, and review the condition of buildings. Alleyway is off of Main Street, Sergeant Hamilton Street. This is a situation that needs both immediate and long-term action.
Yeah, make a motion be referred to DGR.
Motion is to refer to DGNR with a copy to all the departments listed.
And just a quick comment, and just, I took a walk through the alley, and there's buildings, and I think it's four twenty-three, even though there's no address on the building, but I tried to figure the ones around there. It's got a red X. You walk in the alley, and you can walk right into the building. There's nothing there, and there's a few others in the area. I mean, we need, the red Xs need to be inspected, and in many cases, this has got to be removed. I mean, it's falling down in the back eventually, and I know there are kids walking back there, and who knows what else is walking back there. So I just want to make sure they recognize that, and there'll be others coming in the future.
All right, so motion is to send DGNR a copy to the appropriate boards. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seventy, from Counsel Murphy, order that the Public Safety Committee meet with Superintendent of DPW to review the city capacity regarding potholes.
Make motion be referred to the Public Safety Committee?
Motion is to send to Public Safety. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seventy-one from Counsel Murphy, that the Public Safety Committee meet with the City Engineer and Superintendent of DPW, and representatives from Hazen Paper, who was here to discuss South Water Street, both for the business, so?
And let me amend that to eliminate university products, because Hazen is wide out there building, so?
Motion is to remove university products. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And motion be to send to Public Safety.
Yeah, and then, real quick, Mr. President, I mean, obviously, you heard the people from Hazen, and if you, if you go down there, I mean, literally, and the pictures we'll give you there, but as I took the turn to go on that street, it was literally trying to find anywhere where you could actually drive your car without being in a pothole. And then the homeless people, and their, and the drug dealing that's going on, and the needles that they're finding, I mean, that's a company with almost two hundred employees, and Sunoco's also got concerns about it, and sixty thousand dollars in taxes, and their road is deplorable, and the whole condition in that area just has to be addressed, so.
The, there are pictures that supposed to be attached. Those are there, just to make sure. So that was to Public Safety. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seventy-two, from Counsel Murphy, order that the Mayor, Director of Planning Development, and Director of Hoyoke Housing Authority meet with DGNR Committee to seek ways to include parking lot at the corner of Clemente and Hamilton Street as part of the planned South Hoyoke housing redevelopment around Carlos Vega Park.
Make motion to be received and refer to the DGR Committee.
Motion is receive, refer to DGNR. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those with copies to those referenced. And seventy-three, order that the, from Counsel Murphy, order that the allow for the development and redevelopment properties in South Hoyoke in alignment with the existing city plan. More property, find two gateways to the city, and that the property line, the overlay zone, to what is presently in place, bringing these parcels further into conformity while in turn reducing the possibility of future inquiry use. Businesses shown as the following table, and then there's a long list of properties. So motion be to send to?
Ordinance.
Ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That was seventy-three.
I need to?
Seventy-four from Counsel Sullivan, order that the Honorable City Council, according to Master General Law, Chapter thirty-B, Hoyoke Procuring Office vote to accept an offer of forty thousand for six eighty-nine Main Street. Motion be sent to?